I'll call this meeting to order at 7:04. Sonya, can you take the call? The role?
Commissioner Scanlon.
Here.
Commissioner Hannan.
Here.
Commissioner Marhol.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza. Absent. Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Bellattier.
Here.
Absent is Chairperson Mateo and Commissioner Mendoza. Also present is Trustee Lumzin, Trustee Sedevy, and Trustee Pollak.
Okay, do we have any public comment? Hearing none. We'll move on to new business.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome, everybody, to our zoning workshop. We are going to be talking about a wide range of topics tonight. For the board members, it's really a little more geared towards the commission members, to educate them. And one of the reasons for doing that is because we have a number of new members. I think for a long time, we had a lot of long-term members of the Plan Commission. And in the last couple of years, some of those people have left, and we have a lot of new members. And we wanted to take this opportunity to kind of go over some zoning principles and especially talk about standards and field number of questions from you guys. You guys have turned in some really good questions that I think will facilitate some great discussion as we move through the evening. Just very briefly, I'm here tonight with my partner Lance Molina. Lance and I are both partners at Kleintorpe and Jenkins in Chicago, for those of you who don't know us. We are a local government firm, about 30 attorneys. Ninety-five percent of our business is representing local governments. We represent over 20 communities as general counsel, another 20-something as special counsel. We represent a lot of school districts and libraries and other townships and other kinds of specialized districts. We've been around for about 80 years. Lance and I have been working together representing Riverside since 2010. We also work together on zoning in Berwyn. We represent Hinsdale together, including handling all their zoning work. And then individually or with other people, we work with a number of other communities, including Piutown, Mount Prospect, Schaumburg, River Forest.
Mount Prospect? Together we do some.
Maywood. So, you know, we work with a wide variety of communities and have seen a lot of different type of zoning questions come across our bow over the years. And it's something that we're passionate about. So Lance volunteered to come in addition to me tonight and donate his time because we both enjoy sitting around and talking about zoning, and we wanted to take the opportunity to have some good give and take with you guys. And you guys have kind of a tough job compared to some of the other commissions and committees in that what you deal with is somewhat more legalistic. So some of you may have a background that brings you into this field on a regular basis. Maybe sometimes architects or lawyers will have some exposure to zoning. But others of you may be dealing with subjects and terms that aren't familiar to you. And so it's a good opportunity to go over some of those things and talk about not only your roles and responsibilities, but the types of petitions that can come before you because we don't see them all on a regular basis. I think Sonya and I were talking, we've had maybe one zoning appeal in the seven or eight years that we've been working here. We've had only one or two, I think, MAP amendments. And we more regularly have the variations and special uses and tax amendments. But at any rate, it's good to get kind of a foundation of those things. And one of the reasons that it's important is because, you know, 95% of your hearings may be fairly mundane and straightforward and non-controversial, but eventually you're going to get that one that comes. And, you know, the room's going to be packed, there's going to be people on both sides, passions will be high. And it's important, and in those contested matters, it often can end up in court. And it's important that you're familiar with the correct way to do things, that you in fact have done things correctly because your decision, the way you reached that decision, the way you went about conducting the hearing is all going to be scrutinized going forward. So your familiarity with the procedures and standards actually benefits you during the hearings, benefits the village and us as your attorneys later by making your recommendations and decisions easier to defend. So that's some of the importance of having this kind of training. And because a number of you are new, we're going to start out by having Lance talk about, give kind of a quick overview of some Open Meetings Act issues that are important, as well as how to handle conflicts that may arise. So Lance, if you want to take it from there?
So hello, everybody. As Michael said, I'm Lance Molina, and we're sort of co-village attorneys for Riverside. We're coming up on our eighth anniversary of being appointed, and we're really happy to be here. We split the village board meetings, and Michael handles most of the meetings that involve subsidiary bodies like your commission. So the Open Meetings Act is a broad statute that is fundamentally concerned with having important decisions that can lead to laws being changed or property rights being affected by elected officials be done in the open. But what many subsidiary bodies, like yourself, don't necessarily realize is that the Open Meetings Act applies equally to you. Okay? You have some final decision-making authority, as Michael talked about, for textual interpretations that where someone can take an appeal from a staff decision. And then as a recommending body, you have a lot to do about that when you make recommendations to the village board. So the Open Meetings Act applies to you. And we're not going to go through all of the Open Meetings Act. You know, there are very elaborate rules for, for instance, going into closed session where you can discuss things privately. Your commission will never really need to do that. And so there's no point in going over in detail those rules. The village board deals with it quite a bit, and they need to know those rules. But there's a fundamental part of the Open Meetings Act that as a subsidiary body of appointed commissioners, you need to be aware of. And that is that, for the purposes of the Open Meetings Act, a meeting is not a quorum. Okay? Normally, to have a valid meeting of your body under a village code, you need a quorum. You need a majority of you present under the common law definition of a quorum. For the Open Meetings Act, a meeting is any time there is a majority of a quorum present. Or, and that presence can be electronic, it can be on a conference call, it could happen via email where people hit "reply all" in an email chain. And so if there is a majority of a quorum of your seven members, which, let's figure that out, so, right? It's three, right? Because a quorum is four, and a majority of four is three. So two of you can discuss a matter that's coming up before you privately, but three of you cannot. And generally, it's advisable for a body that conducts public hearings to really not have much pre-discussion anyway because your role, if you're conducting a public hearing, is quasi-judicial, really, even more so than the village board. By the time it gets up to the village board, the public hearing's closed. They don't, when people petition them about whether your recommendation should be followed or not, the hearing is over. And the due process rights are different for people at that level. They're basically acting legislatively at that point. But at your level, in making your recommendation, you're authorized and commissioned to conduct a public hearing. And so you really want to, generally speaking, try to come to that public hearing without a lot of pre-conceived study of whatever the evidence might be in the hearing. Now, of course, that's impossible because you live in the community, but in the back of your mind, that should be the context in which you approach matters that are going to come before you. Try to come to it with an open mind and a clean slate, but under the Open Meetings Act, any three of you should not be discussing any matter of public business, anything that can be coming before the board in the near future, that sort of thing. Now, let's back up a little bit because you all go, you're all members of the community, you all go to events, you go to community events, you might be at parties, and you might say, "Well, are you telling me we can't talk about anything about the village?" The answer to that is, no, you can. But if it's related to anything that could be coming up in the near future that is of a specific nature, like, you know, you talk to a neighbor who's thinking about doing an addition that might require a variation, and you became aware of it, that's something you should generally stay away from if a group of you is together. Because you go to the back of your mind, "Hey, that person might be applying, I think it's a bad idea," so you don't want to start talking about it. But if it's about, you know, general village board, general state of the village, the finances, the budget, you know, stuff, especially for your group where you don't deal with any of that as part of your mission, that's all fair game, even if you're at a party and there are three or four of you talking about it. So it needs to relate to things that could be coming before you as a practical matter, but not necessarily before you write that. And so that's probably the main thing I want you to get out of your duties under the Open Meetings Act, okay, is this idea of a majority of a quorum, discussing a public business, the idea of watching your email traffic, generally avoid using the "reply all" function if you end up, if, say if staff sends out a block email to you all about a meeting change or a scheduling issue. Even if it's just about scheduling, which is okay to hit "reply all," generally speaking, it's a better practice not to so that you don't accidentally get drawn into a discussion about the matter that you're talking about, scheduling, for example.
I try very hard to make sure that every email I send to you, that you are all blind copied on it.
Right. Which is something we tell staff, to make it harder for you.
To help keep that kind of thing from happening.
Right. Right. So that's the Open Meetings Act. The other thing that we wanted to talk a little bit about are conflicts of interest, okay? And again, as a commission, there's the most dramatic and draconian conflict of interest you generally aren't going to need to worry about. The village board would see this more often. And that is where, in being called on to vote, you could have a direct pecuniary interest in the outcome of the vote. So an example of that is if the village board is going to enter into a contract for some services, and one of the board members, you know, has an interest, is on commission or has a financial interest where could actually get compensation if that vote passes. That kind of conflict of interest is very significant. It has significant criminal penalties if it's violated, you know, again, if it's, because it's criminal, there has to be intent. So if it's truly accidental, criminal consequences wouldn't apply, but it is a criminal statute. And the other thing that's important about that kind of conflict is it cannot be cured by recusing oneself, can't be done. The only solution is either for the contract to be forgone, in other words, the village doesn't enter into that contract, doesn't vote on it at all, or the person with the pecuniary interest must resign from the board. That's the only way to cure that kind of conflict. At your commission, though, you really won't see that because you are generally not going to have those kinds of conflicts. There are, you might see at your level an indirect pecuniary interest where often on P&amp;Z commissions or, you know, zoning boards or plan commissions or combined commissions, you have members of that commission that might be realtors or architects. And occasionally, there'll be a petitioner where the architect is on that project, has done the design, okay? And that is something that is a common law conflict, that kind of interest. And so that can be cured by recusing oneself. It is a conflict because you could gain if this is passed, but it's not a direct pecuniary interest because the only thing really being voted on is the zoning, not the contract. It's the zoning relief. But there's a contract behind that petition that if it's granted, you know, more money might be made. Because if it's not approved, you don't build the house, you don't, so that kind of interest is what's called a common law conflict. Those are more amorphous, those aren't defined by statute. The statutory conflicts are very specific. There are all sorts of very specific exceptions for companies where people own stock in large companies. There are all sorts of exceptions where there is no statutory conflict if your pecuniary interest is basically tiny and where there's no control.
So if you own stock in McDonald's and they're coming before you for zoning relief, typically that's not going to be an issue?
Right. Certainly not, you know, not a monetary conflict, there still could be some kind of a common law conflict. But common law conflicts can always be cured by declaring what the conflict is, not participating in the discussion, and abstaining from voting. Okay? All three of those have to be present in order to properly avoid the conflict. The idea is that not voting alone is not enough because it's thought, and courts have said, that by participating in the debate, you can help steer the vote even if you end up abstaining, if you have that kind of an interest. And it's important to declare what the conflict is if it's a common law conflict. Common law conflicts are harder to define. Whenever you feel uncomfortable, maybe, it's always good to check with Jessica, and she can either check with us or, you know, say that it's fine for you to call one of us and ask the question. So let's give some examples. So a clear one is the one I gave you, which is where you're the architect, you know, for a petitioner, right? That's very clear, you can't be voting on that. You do have a potential subsidiary interest, an indirect monetary interest in what happens with this variation request, let's say. But let's take it a little bit in a different direction. So let's say you're a member of the Historical Society, and let's say they have a building, and you pay your dues to the Historical Society, and you're proud of that, you're very interested in the mission, and the Historical Society needs some kind of relief because they own some property and they want, they need some zoning relief. And so you are simply a dues-paying member. You know, is that the kind of thing where you need to recuse yourself? The answer to that is no. If your interest in that is merely you're a member, you pay your dues every year, even if you're personally interested in it, as long as you can be fair in your own mind and listen to the evidence about it, you can hear that matter. What if you're on the board that is actually voting on the application and submitting it to the village? The answer to that is no, you should recuse yourself. If you're part of the, sort of the prime body that runs the organization, you are part of the, what would be in corporate law called the control group of that body. And at that point, that is definitely a common law conflict that you need to recuse yourself under the manner that I've described. And then we get into the hazier areas. And that's basically when you are dealing with people that you know, right? You know them in the community, you chat with them from time to time. And this is where it really becomes, there are two things to keep in mind in this area. One is, how well do you know the person? And equally important is how well the community thinks you know the person. Because one of the things we need to avoid is the appearance of impropriety. So even though in your mind, you could fairly judge a petitioner who comes before you because you know the person, but you've got no problem, if there's a perception in the community that you are very close, it's probably better to point that out and recuse yourself. By the same token, there may be no such perception, and you may know somebody, and for all intents and purposes, you could go forward, but you have, in your mind, you really feel like you've prejudged it, you know too much about it, you've known the person for a long time, you just feel like you can't do it justice. And that's a valid reason to abstain, too. So the important reason to talk about the reasons for abstaining is, under Illinois law, legally, if you're in an office, whether it's appointed or whether you're elected, you have to vote. There are cases that say you have a fundamental obligation to cast your vote. You can't just abstain because you don't want to be on record about a certain vote. And what Illinois law does is, if you don't have a valid conflict and you abstain, it counts your vote with the majority if there were to be litigation that results from it. And sometimes when I tell people about this law, people get angry, and they say, "Are you telling me it's illegal for me to abstain?" And it's like, no, you have the First Amendment right to, you know, to speak your conscience, and if you don't vote, you won't vote. So you're not going to get in trouble, but if there were to be litigation, your vote would go with the majority because of this duty to vote. So the important thing about making a record and declaring a conflict, if it exists, is it makes sure that your vote really isn't counted because you've declared this conflict and you haven't participated. And, you know, there's also a concept of conflict of offices, which isn't really relevant for us, and that's where offices, you can't hold two offices within the same community, basically, because they are incompatible. And also, something to keep in mind for some of you is, you may be aware of other towns that have detailed ethics ordinances that govern their, you know, P&amp;Z commissions that go well beyond what the common law or state statute provides. It's kind of a trend you see, and it's basically, it tries to govern all kinds of communications leading up to a hearing. Some of the things that I told you about, about since you conduct public hearings, be aware of what information that's fed to you before that hearing, and try to keep a, kind of a lid on it, realizing you should get your evidence at the hearing. Some of those things, ordinances, go beyond and try to be very specific. So if you have any knowledge of those ordinances and you start thinking, "Are we doing things wrong because we don't have such an ordinance?" No. Legally, those communities have decided, their village boards have decided to impose additional requirements. But they're not required, and it's perfectly okay to just give people due process without those extra ordinances, and there's nothing wrong with not having them. So if you've heard about that, I think that's an important thing for you to know. So those are the things we wanted to lead into. We don't want to spend a lot of time on it. If any of you have any questions about this stuff, we can talk about it real quickly now. Any questions about the preliminary stuff?
Well, I have a question expounding upon your comments about coming in with a clean slate and not knowing a lot in advance. So outside of the Open Meeting Act, independently, I like to research, like drive by a house or look at the situation, look at the lay of land, like, should we be doing that?
Perfectly okay. That's basically very background material. What you probably want to avoid is interviewing people on your own ahead of time, you know, to get your own spin on what they're going to testify to. But getting an idea of what the request is, that's just being a good commission.
Yeah, in fact, we recommend that. It's good practice to go by the site and get an on-the-ground feel for what is being presented. All right. So moving into some of the more zoning-oriented things, I handed out a packet.
Oh, can I just, this occurred to me.
Yes.
So let's say you have a close relationship with someone.
Yeah.
What could be perceived, and you didn't realize that they were the person that was going to be submitting a petition that night? Like, you didn't recognize the name, or it was a business name, or it was a husband's name and not the wife's name, or vice versa? What do you do at that point if you're then sitting here?
Oh, is it the first night?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you can.
And it's not the pecuniary interest, it's just the perception of a personal relationship?
It's something where you're not going to have a lot of time to research it, but what I would do is, you make a judgment call on the spot. If it's suddenly you see somebody you know well, or you think, you would say, "Oh, I didn't realize this." You can announce what is the conflict right on the spot.
Okay.
And then what you do if you're at the meeting, and sometimes there might be two other matters on the meeting that you have no conflict, you could still be at the meeting. What's, the best practice, in my view, is to say, "I just realized so-and-so is, you know, this is their petition, and I don't feel comfortable voting on this because we, you know, we do a lot of things together in the community, our kids are in this together, and we go to this and that. I intend to not participate and recuse myself." Then you should, when you get to that matter, then you just go sit in the audience.
Okay.
And that's fine. You can listen.
Okay, thank you.
But on the flip side of that, if you recognize somebody and realize, "Well, I know them pretty well," but you still feel that perception-wise, you know, they're just another relationship of yours in the community, it's a small town, we all know, we're all pretty close with each other.
Right, right. So you have to make a judgment, but it's okay that.
Right, if you feel you can act fairly, sure.
Yeah. The key one for me is, it was a chair of a commission that once called me and said, "You know, I think I might have a conflict. The petitioner, he lives on my block." And, you know, I know him. You know, I said, "Well, do you, are you friends?" He goes, "Well, we talk when I see him out." You know, said, "I think, we might have even had him over to dinner once about 10 years ago." I said, "Frank, that's not a conflict." Unless for some reason those sparse interactions make you completely biased against or in favor of the person, it's not a conflict, you could vote.
Right, okay.
All right. Michael?
All right. So I gave a handout, and we're not going to go page by page in detail, but I am going to use it a little bit as a guide. And start, the first thing in there is an overview of the PCC. And, you know, we don't really need to talk a lot about this, but I wanted to call your attention, you know, you guys are familiar with the zoning code, but there's also a chapter in the village code that creates the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I attached at the end of your, the very end of your materials, the, just a couple pages and provisions on that, because it sets forth your powers and kind of lists the various things that the commission does, some of which I summarized on page one here. And it talks about the fact that you hold these public hearings, what you hold them on, MAP and tax amendments, and that you make final decisions on appeals, you make these recommendations to the board on these various things. And so I just wanted you to be aware of that. It also sets forth some of the, in that first section, I talk about some of the procedures. So there's a lot of stuff in the zoning code about timing, and that's not a real concern to you guys. When we get petitions and they're processed by staff, they're forwarded to you, they're put on the agenda, then you have certain timeframes in which to hear them and make your findings and move those on to the board. But, and there's notice requirements, you know, which staff also works with the petitioner on taking care of. But I did want to give you kind of a summary of that information in the packet so you have it.
It's important for you, I think, because sometimes you may get questions in the public about, why does something take so long? Or, you know, and in the back of your mind, if you know that there are these notice requirements and timing, even though you don't deal with them, you can explain it, so.
Right. Petitioners always want to go fast, but we are legally bound to publish notices in certain timeframes and make sure the application's complete and get these mailings out. And all that stuff is time-consuming, and so things don't always go as fast as a petitioner might like. But that's just the way it works. Moving on to page three, we have a section entitled "Basic Principles and Types of Zoning Relief." You know, the first little blurb there is about where your authority comes from. As a non-home role community, you get your zoning authority from Illinois state law. There's a section of the Illinois Municipal Code that concerns zoning and talks about plan commissions and zoning boards of appeal. And one interesting thing is, you guys are a combined commission, and so that wasn't true until a few years ago. There was a Riverside Zoning Board of Appeals, or there was a Riverside Plan Commission, two separate bodies. You know, the ZBA heard appeals and variations, the Plan Commission heard special uses and site plan and other types of things. And a decision was made at some point that it made sense to combine them, and that's something that's allowed under Illinois law. And, you know, across the state, it's kind of a mixed bag. There's combined commissions and there's separated ones. I tend to personally like the combined ones better for the simple reason that when we do get something that is a little more complicated and may involve both variations and special uses, you are one single body for that developer to come to and work through who can grant, who can consider all the different relief that they're seeking, and you have the best idea because you're not considering it in bits and pieces. You're not just looking at the variation aspect or the special use aspect because you're looking at the whole thing. I think you're able to do a more effective job. So I personally am a fan of the combined commissions. And so it's been several years now, and I think it's going well in Riverside, from what I can tell. So you get your authority from state law, and then, you know, through your, through the zoning ordinance, which you all should have a copy of, you implement that state authority, and it gives you authority to do these different things, the special uses and the variations, and to divide the village into zoning districts. uses and the variations, and to divide the village into zoning districts. And then there's some limits on that zoning authority through case law. And so that's kind of the universe, and we don't need to get into any more detail than that about the authority. I do want to spend some time talking about the different types of relief that can come to you. The first thing we're going to talk about is map amendments. So I don't think most of you have probably seen a map amendment in your time here, although they do come from time to time. And that's, so if you have a copy of the zoning map...
Just making a break.
Okay. You know the village has these residential districts and commercial districts and different types of commercial districts and different types of residential districts. And so we have authority to divide the village into those kind of districts, but sometimes there's a property owner or other interested person who wants a particular property to be rezoned, and that's known as a map amendment. And we're physically changing our zoning map, so if that change is approved, they go on the map and they change the designation of that particular parcel or swath of properties. An example might be an owner of a large apartment building who wants to convert the building to a hotel. So he's in a multifamily or residential district, but he would need some sort of commercial zoning in order to do that commercial function. And so he could, he could seek that zoning relief.
Yes, I mean, is that a way to maybe move into the special use?
Well...
Well, that's, so that's the next part, is text amendments.
Yeah, sometimes there would be more ways to accomplish something, but a special use may not be available if it's not on the list of special uses, for example.
For that, for that map...
Right, so a text amendment is another thing that kind of, is a similar way to get at things sometimes, where you're actually changing the text of our zoning code. And so that happens a lot with uses. So that same apartment building owner could say, "Well, why don't we make hotels a special use in this particular residential zoning district?" That's another way that he could approach it. But because we generally disfavor allowing commercial uses in our residential zoning districts, he's probably better off, if he's adjacent to an existing district, to try the rezoning.
Right, some of it depends on, yeah, what the underlying district, if the special use is like, not, it's like the antithesis of what the underlying zoning is, it doesn't make sense.
Right. So in terms of text amendments, you know, we do those fairly frequently, and a lot of it is driven by a perceived need for a change by either you guys as the commission, you have authority to initiate these, or the Board of Trustees, or particular people in the community, to propose an amendment to the zoning ordinance. And one of the drivers, again, to that is these types of uses. So an example is when the craft distillery came to town, and, you know, that didn't fit within any of our existing uses, and in fact, across Illinois, it's a relatively recent phenomenon, they had to be approved. Both craft breweries and craft distilleries were incorporated into the Illinois Liquor Control Act as something that was allowed and delegated to local governments the authority to allow those uses, and at that point, people were able to start working them into their code. So at the time the distillery approached the village, we created a liquor license designation for that. We changed our code to make it a special use in certain places. And at the same time, we did the craft breweries, because we said, "Well, this is another new type of thing, and we want to be prepared if someone comes to us. Wouldn't it be more attractive to have that in place, that they can already apply for that zoning designation?" Driving schools is another example. It's one that we've had in the last year or two here, where we didn't have a particular category within which a driving school could fit. So when we were approached by a particular driving school, they proposed a tax amendment, where we amended our code to say, "Driving schools are allowed in this particular zoning district." Okay? And those aren't the only type of tax amendments. We have all kinds of tax amendments regarding procedures and fees and standards. You know, we reworked our variation standards, which we'll talk about in a while. And we also, the porch example, we redid our code relative to the porches in the last couple of years, and the plan commission members at that time spent a lot of time talking about what those tax amendments would look like. So that's a tax amendment, and in both those map amendment and tax amendment cases, once they are ready for you guys, once the application is in place and it's been teed up and the notices have been given, you hold a public hearing, just like you do on the variations or special uses, and you make a recommendation on those to the board. And the standards for those are a little bit different than what you're used to with the special uses or variations, because there's no single group standard or group of standards that has to be met. It's more a matter of legislative discretion left to you. And I'm always interested in the fact that the Riverside zoning ordinance has this chart, which I don't generally see in a lot of other communities, which lists all these different kind of standards relative to map and text amendments and which one they apply to. Some apply to both, some apply to just one. But they talk about the kind of considerations that you would give to a tax amendment, and not, and again, unlike a special use or a variation, you don't need to meet all of these, but we look for, are some of these met, and based on that, does it appear to be a logical and good idea to make this particular amendment? And a lot of these standards actually come out of Illinois case law.
Yes. I mean, I think the basic thing to remember is, with map and text amendments, you really are the most free to think, "Does this make sense? Is this a good idea for the village?", right? When you are considering a special use, which is one step less free, you've got something that's on a list as potentially appropriate in a district, but it's called special because you want to hear exactly where in that district it is, who the neighbors are, you want to give the neighbors a chance to be aware this is going in, and you want to look at it closely, but it's still tied fundamentally to, is this good for the village, but is it good for this area? Right? And a variation is the most restricted, because it's basically saying, "The rules are what they are, but they shouldn't apply to me in this case, because I'm in a unique situation." So that's, that's the most narrow.
So going on and talking about special uses, so as Lance alluded to, special uses are something that, it's generally been decided that this is, in most cases, going to an appropriate use for the particular zoning district, okay? But because of the nature of it or its particular impacts, we want to take a case-by-case look at that, at that use, and make sure that it's going to be appropriate in the particular place that it's going to be, or whether we need to place some conditions on it in order to make it appropriate. So again, by making a text amendment and saying something can be a special use in a particular zoning district, we've made a determination already that it's going to be compatible with the neighborhood, but we want to look at those impacts. So if you think about some of the things that are typically special uses, you will see drive-throughs. So why is that? Because they are idling cars, their lights, their potential noise, talking back and forth through a, through a menu board, their litter impacts. So when those type of things are right up against residential, we want to have the opportunity to look at that and say, "Are there conditions that we put on those?" Daycares are almost always a special use, again, because there's pickup and drop-off, there is playground requirements, there's security lighting. We want to kind of judge the traffic flow, because it's unusual compared to your usual retail or service type of business. And it involves small children, it can be unpredictable. So those are typically special uses.
In a residential setting, bed and breakfasts.
Yep, bed and breakfasts are another good one, because we allow them in our residential districts, they're residential type of use, but, you know, they involve potential parking impacts and bringing people that don't live in the community into the, into the residential neighborhood for short periods, and we want to make sure. And their type of commercial use, essentially, that we're allowing on this limited basis in a residential district, and we want to look at those impacts. Okay? So that's special uses, and again, as you know, you make these, you have these public hearings, and often will fashion some conditions that you want to place on that use. And the standards really go to, as Lance said, what is the impact going to be? Okay? So we know that we're probably, it's most likely compatible, because it's already designated as a special use, but is it going to affect property values? Is the parking going to be sufficient? What are the buildings and malls and fences going to be like in terms of, in relation to the, to the neighbors? Those sorts of things. There's a note here, "Special uses run with the land." So once you say a daycare can locate there, unless we limit that in the ordinance, somebody could sell that daycare and the next operator could come in. So you have to kind of think down the line, well, you know, these conditions, we may know this person and feel comfortable with them, but we want conditions that may control this use in the event that they aren't always the operator. And lastly, we have variations. So variations, again, as Lance said, are kind of, they are asking permission to do something that's contrary to the zoning ordinance, but that somebody is saying, "I should be able to do that in my particular case." Okay? It's a modification of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance, and they seem to be kind of the most common, but also something that we all find challenging, because they are difficult from a standard standpoint. And I want to give us some time to kind of delve into those standards, and you guys, like I said, have put together a lot of questions, many of which relate to the variations. So we're going to skip, hold that for a little bit and run through the rest of this stuff real quick, and then we'll talk about variations and make sure we have plenty of time to do Okay. The next thing we have is, let's go to the rules, procedures, and responsibilities on page 11. As I said, there's going to come a time when we have a packed room and a kind of a more high-profile hearing, and one of the things that we've found useful to have in place is rules and procedures that kind of govern how that hearing is going to go. And in the next couple pages here, we kind of laid out some best practices, rules and procedures, and maybe we could even talk about these at a later meeting and consider any modifications that you guys want to have and then adopt them. So we do have them, because you don't want to be doing it the day that you have the hearing, trying to, let's get our rules and procedures in place so that we can kind of control how this goes.
But generally speaking, the one, most of the rules and procedures are really the province of the chair. The chair is the one that really needs to understand the fundamental rules of due process, whether they're enumerated specifically in a set of written rules, or whether they're the basic principles of due process that have to be followed. The members just need to be aware that the chair has this obligation, but it's basically the chair that's going to say, "Okay, now is the time for, you know, the commission members to ask questions of this witness."
Right, to kind of lead everybody through.
Now is the time, so it's the chair that's going to do that, not the general membership.
Yep. All right, so these are here for you to kind of mull over, and like I said, we could talk about them at some future meeting. Okay, we also wanted to talk about responsibilities.
How you trying to...
So, you know, we mentioned a couple of these, but it's important, we just put down some basic obligations that every plan commissioner should have in the back of their head, being familiar with the zoning ordinance, trying to get to as many meetings as you can, I know we're all busy, meeting preparation, familiarizing yourself with the packet and what's in there, so that you, you can ask intelligent questions and have kind of given it some thought ahead of time. And again, Allison, to your point, it's certainly encouraged to read the packet so that you're familiar with everything, and that's not what we're talking about when we talk about receiving that information. We're talking about more from outside sources. But in the packet, we'll always have the application, we'll have the standards, we'll, you know, you can look at the appropriate code sections that they're asking for relief from. Touring the community and visiting the site, so that you kind of understand the ins and outs and what's next door and what it looks like. Prepare questions and opinions, and one of the things that Lance and I like to emphasize is highlighted in number five there, reasonable people may and often do disagree. You know, in today's social media-driven atmosphere, we see many boards that kind of degenerate into some really nasty goings-on, and it's, it's hard for everybody when that happens. I think Riverside is great, the board has always been tremendous, and the commissions as well, and operating in a very respectful fashion, but it's something that we always have to keep in mind, that just because people don't agree on particular zoning principles or how something should shake out from a standard standpoint, is not a reason to resort to name-calling or anything else. And we see it happen. Training and more training, there's a lot of, you know, groups that do training around the area, so, you know, we're always happy to talk to you guys and provide as much guidance as we can, but there's also other opportunities, you know, planning conferences and all kinds of stuff, that Sonya can keep you up to date on if you're interested in getting additional insights. Avoiding conflicts of interest, we talked about, and then we have a list of kind of duties of the chairperson, that Lance alluded to, kind of the things that Jill does to kind of lead us through the agenda. Then we have a section on decisions and findings of fact. So interestingly, one of the things that we do here is, you guys do a great job of kind of going through the standards, talking about the facts as they apply to the standards, and then making your decision. And that gives us a lot to work with from a staff and attorney position in drafting the findings and recommendation for the chair to review and forward on to the board. There are some boards that always have the findings come back to them for formal approval. People tend not to like that, because it takes an extra meeting, you know, you're waiting an extra month. So the practice in Riverside as well, some other places, has always been to have, to have staff prepare the draft findings, and the chair reviews them to make sure that they accurately represent what was, what was moved and found, and then they sign off on them. If there's ever a case that's so controversial that you guys feel on an individual basis or as a group that you want the findings to come back to you, feel free to speak up, and we can bring them back for approval prior to them going to the board. So there's information in here about, about decisions and making your findings, kind of common sense stuff, but some things to be aware of, and Lance, feel free to jump in on this, because I know you and I were talking about this today, is that we don't need, and these ones where we have particular standards that need to be met, we don't always have petitioners who are represented by legal counsel or who are sophisticated in their ways of zoning, even if they have an architect representing them or working with them, who present evidence on every aspect of the different standards at your meeting. And you don't always need to have this affirmative evidence put forth to you in order to find a standard has been met. We send out, the notices go to all the neighbors, okay? And they have an opportunity to come in here and voice their objections. And the fact that they received notice and didn't come can in some ways inform your decision as to whether there is opposition or whether...
Or whether there's harm to be...
Whether there's going to be harm on the adjacent properties. Okay? Because if somebody thinks it's not in their best interest to have what's happening happen, they'll come.
Yeah.
Because they do all the time.
And having said that, if you're aware of, if no one is present objecting, but you have questions about whether something was considered or looked at, you can ask those questions, because you realize a petitioner is going to present the request in the most favorable light to the petitioner. And so it's okay to ask those questions, but one thing that you really don't need to think about as being... to think about as being mandatory is if somebody doesn't present, like ticks off every of the, every one of the standards and says, here's my evidence under this, then that means you have to deny if they didn't do that. You know, no. You can look at the record as a whole, and you ask questions about the standards, especially if it's someone, you know, most people with attorneys, although you'd be surprised, right? I'm continually shocked at attorneys that's talking about, whoa, this is a great project, it's everything, you know, so. I always tell them, if they call me in advance, it's like, is there anything you suggest? I say, yeah, please go through the standards and try to outline how they're met, you know? It's like, that would be helpful. You'd think that would be obvious, and that's what an attorney would do, but many, some of them don't. So, anyway, that, but it's just the idea that as, as a commission, you know, you deal with people, some of whom are very prepared and some of whom aren't, some of whom don't understand the legal aspects well, and you will understand them a lot better. So, you ask questions based on your knowledge of the standards if they're not forthcoming.
So, it's a little footnote, Michael, sorry. Yes, indeed. Just for your information, in zoning matters, if, once a final decision has, has been made, people have 90 days under the law to, to appeal to the circuit court if they take issue with that. And other than on appeals, you guys aren't the final decision maker, that's at the board, but I just wanted you to have kind of that, that standard in your head. I have a little section in here on irrelevant and improper considerations. So, so things, there's, there's some things that you should not rely on. And I put a few examples in here. If, if someone looks at title insurance, for instance, and sees, or, or goes on the county website, sees that there's unpaid property taxes or property maintenance liens, that's not really a consideration, that doesn't relate to the standards. It may be negative information, but it, but it doesn't, it doesn't inform your decision under the standards. For special uses, denying a permit solely on the ground, the use is generally incompatible with the surrounding area. Well, we've already made that determination by making it a special use in that zoning district. So, unless you can say, at this particular location, it's going to be worse than it would be in the rest of that, that zoning district for whatever reason, you, you can't deny it.
Yeah. An excellent example of that would be where you have, say, a drive-through as a special use, and this particular drive-through, it's in a commercial district, and this particular drive-through, a bought, single-family residential. That would be one where maybe on that location, it's not going to work, or there'd have to be extra conditions that wouldn't be present if it were in the middle of the commercial district. Make sense?
Same for traffic. So, i- if the traffic impacts aren't going to be any worse at this particular location than they would be elsewhere in the district where this is designated as special use, then that's not a, something that you can rely on by itself to say that we're not going to approve here. Okay. So, that, that is kind of the, the zoning aspects. If you go to page 18, I put some sample motions in here because motions can, can always be a challenge, especially when you're new. So, we want to, we want to move to approve something, and I always remember you recommending approval. Describe the relief being sought, and, and then list any conditions as part of your motion, and you guys are doing a good job of that. Call to our attention, facts during, during the hearing and during your, your deliberations that, that support granting the approval, and then making your findings. So, so for variations in particular, we're looking at what's unique about this property, what sets it, sets it apart? What is it about the specific history of the property that, that, that makes this an appropriate variation? There, there's a note in here, you don't all need to recite your personal reasoning. If you generally agree with, with whatever other people have said as to the standards, just say, you know, I don't have anything to add, I agree with. Sure. If, if you do want to deny something, it's best to make a motion to deny, or at least have created a record as to the basis, what standards you feel aren't met. And again, you guys do a great job on that, but I just wanted to make, it's in here.
It's easier to do the findings if there's a motion to deny. If there's a motion to approve that fails...
Yep.
You know, it's legally, it's the same thing as a recommendation to deny, but it's much more difficult to hone in on what, what it's based on. There's a motion to deny based on certain facts that people set forth, it's just, it makes it easier to get the findings done in a way that actually sends a message to the board, a coherent message to the board, even though legally they have the same effect. The other thing to keep in mind, this comes up a lot, if the motion is to deny, yes means no. Okay? So, you gotta, if people get that, they could get confused all the time.
Yeah. One thing on the motions, you know, a lot of times we, we consider conditions.
Right.
That came up in our recent...
Yep.
And have always been level of confusion of what sort of between the lines we have to suggest those conditions, or, you know, where is our leeway to...
Well, is, is the question, what kind of conditions are allowed, or is the question more like, how do you work those into the motion?
I think it's both.
Okay. Because what, what happens a lot when there's a motion to approve something is you'll see a motion to approve, and that may be seconded, and then during the discussion and coming to a consensus, it becomes clear that a majority are in favor of approving it, but with conditions, and that's after the motion is made. So, you know, Robert's Rules has all these technical things about amending motions and the motions to amend, that those are... In a small group like yours, once you reach the consensus, as long as one of you says, so, okay, so I'd be in favor of these conditions, then the person who made the motion, as long as it's clear that that person is willing to amend the motion to include those conditions, and there's a second to that, you don't need to go through an elaborate procedural mess in order to get there. As long as it's clear from the record that the movement is willing to accept those conditions, if the second comes and say, oh yeah, I'm willing to as well, and then you take the vote, so it's clear that the motion has to include the conditions though at the end of the day. And as far as conditions, you know, keep in mind what Michael said about, they have to be relevant to the standards. So, conditions that are, you know, this special use I, I think could be approved, but I want, I don't, I want it to be painted blue to match with the neighboring house, that one isn't a good one. But if the, any conditions that are related to the standards to alleviate, to mitigate the effect on the neighboring residential property, I want the drive to have a, a higher fence so the lights don't shine and the, you know, want it to be solid, board on board or whatever, those are, those who work in to the motion.
If you look at page 16, the, the top four paragraphs, a small d, is about conditions. So, they're advisory, they're not binding on the village board, that's something to keep in mind, the, the board looks at the conditions and can reject or modify them. But they can concern the establishment, location, construction, maintenance, and operation that special uses are deemed necessary, the protection of the public interest, and the secure compliance with the special use standards and other applicable code requirements. So, there's a lot of stuff that's fair game, whatever you guys think is, is going to, to make it compatible with that general area. And there's, there's, you know, you can put conditions on variations too.
Yes.
And, and even, we're dealing with one another time right now, we've got a bunch of conditions on a site plan approval. So, you know, you have pretty wide-ranging authority as long as it's relevant. So, so if somebody, if somebody needs a special use to go into a, an office, an existing building, they're not making any exterior modifications, but then you guys are putting all kinds of requirements about landscaping and stuff outside, that's not, that's, that's getting pretty far afield.
Well, I think what Ed was referring to was a case we had, I think, a few weeks ago. Another thing that's felt a little awkward about that is people started discussing conditions, and the petitioner's right there. And then it was sort of like, do we have a dialogue with the petitioner? Sonia, have a dialogue with them? Does the chair have a dialogue?
Okay.
We're discussing these conditions, is this okay with you? How do you deal with that?
It's a, well, it's, it's an important question because the petitioner has a right to proceed without the conditions if they want. But it's, it's a good idea to ask if they'd be willing to do it because it's very important, if it's something they're willing to do, to, to note that in the record and to get that, to get that in there. You know, it's, it's perfectly appropriate. They have the right to say, no, we wouldn't agree to that, and you have the right to still recommend the condition be imposed, but it's a good idea to know how they feel about it.
Well, because at some level, as one of you said, they may not be sophisticated, they may not have an attorney, and they may not know that they can stand up and say, hey, well, I can't do that for this reason or other. So, we end up with...
No, and that's exactly right.
...comply with it.
Well, that's exactly right.
It's balancing act, for sure.
That's exactly right. Sometimes you want to impose a condition, or you're thinking about it, that they actually thought would be a good idea but rejected because it was so expensive. And so, the minute you bring it up, they'll say, you know, we thought about that, and here's what it would cost. And then you may rethink how reasonable...
Exactly.
Yep, that's okay.
Which is cool to have that dialogue.
That's okay.
And I wasn't, I didn't really, I didn't know how comfortable we could be as individual commissioners having that dialogue.
Yeah, that's okay.
So, you can have that dialogue, and, and like Lance said, it's, it's important. If you can reach yes on a set of conditions that they're able to live with and that you guys think is, is going to make it work from your perspective, then that's great.
Yeah.
And that hap, that happens quite a bit.
And if the neighbors are happy with it too, then you really go to them, right? Because then, then it, those are conditions that really make a lot of sense.
Right. But, but sometimes when there are objectors, when there's neighbors who are opposed to something, they will continue to push for, for things that may be financially impractical for, for the, for the petitioner to do. And, and then it, it puts everyone in a difficult situation, and you guys have to kind of be the decision maker there as to, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to put conditions on there that are going to make it untenable for the person unless it's absolutely necessary from, from a perspective of making it work.
Yeah. Because you've got to balance your community members, right? So, you have to have conditions that are not going to kill a deal that is generally good for the village, maybe economically, a commercial use, with neighbors that, you know, think there's no way I want this here ever, and you think, well, we think with some conditions, this will work. And that's not the best scenario, but it's one that you, it's a call you're going to have to make at some point. But other times, the dialogue that, that was discussed can lead to a joint sort of proposal almost that goes up to the board, and then their job's very easy if everyone, if it started out with objectors, and at the end of the day, you have a recommendation that includes conditions they can live with and the neighbors think will work.
A good, a good example is lighting. So, so things that have outdoor lighting may draw people from the adjacent properties who are very concerned about what effect this is going to have on, on my life and what kind of light is going to be spilling over. And there's a lot of things that could be done with lighting in terms of dimming it at night or putting shields on it to protect the direction from which it goes. And, and a lot of times, those type of dialogues can be very productive because without a lot of cost, the petitioner can work with people and reach something that's going to work for everybody. And so, there's, there's different things like that. And even, so let's go back to drive-throughs. So, making commitments about turning down the volume after a certain hour or readjusting the, the direction of the, the lead-up, lead-up lane so that the lights are going this way instead of right towards somebody's window. All those things can be worked around sometimes with a good dialogue.
And also, keep in mind another thing, which is often neighbors come in and they're worried about things that are already regulated by the building code or by the property, by, by other codes that are not the zoning code, which have to be complied with, the building permitting process, the site, you know, the things that happen only after they get zoning approval because they can't even get that far unless they have zoning approval. So, it's a good idea to have a smattering of knowledge, and of course Sonia will be present and has a better grasp of that. But sometimes people want conditions that you're, you know, you could spend hours saying, oh, you know, the lighting has to not bleed on the neighboring property. Well, the code requires it. So, the plans are, you know...
And it brings to mind one of the questions that we had, which was concerning drainage, for instance. So, you guys are looking at drainage as, as part of your variation standards from a very high level.
Very high.
Very, very high. Like, is it obviously going to create drainage problems? Because the real drainage workout issues happen at the building permit level.
Right.
Where somebody's engineering, bringing in this engineering, their grading plans and all those things, and those things are analyzed and, and staff makes the appropriate decisions on those to, to make sure that they, they are code-compliant.
Right. Because they're going to need a certified engineer to show how the water that is going to be generated by this development from runoff is going to be handled so that it doesn't affect neighboring properties. That level of detail you will not have before you at your level because no one's going to spend that kind of money on an engineering plan just without knowing whether they're going to get the variation. So, the question, and the neighbors are going to want that detail. You know, they're going to want to guarantee it. I mean, there, it's not, you don't want to get too far afield. Your review is more general.
So, when it says in that provision, the proposed variation will not impair natural drainage or create drainage problems on adjacent properties. You're saying that we sort of should have a broad brush approach, like if it's real obvious.
Right.
Yes.
So, it's going to or not, that's all we need.
Yeah. Like, to ask questions about, are you changing the topography? Because even grade changes, you can't really do significant grade changes without getting special approval, that's unrelated to zoning. But certainly, you know, you can ask those questions, you can assure neighbors, you can say, well, and of course, you, you know, you understand that as part of the permitting process, you're going to need to go through a full site plan and drainage, and if you want, if a neighbor is made comfortable, if you put as a condition they're going to follow all the building rules, I mean, that's fine. I'm just letting you know that there's all, there's all this body of rules out there that is independent of what your approval is.
Yep. All right. So, that takes us to variations.
May I ask a question, Ben, on the motions?
Yes.
So, that's what you said, if we do not approve a motion to approve...
Right, if it fails.
Are you, yes, yes, if it fails, are you recommending then that we then immediately follow up with a motion to deny?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sure if we always, I don't recall if we've ever...
Well, and legally, legally, the effect technically is the same.
Right.
I just was pointing out that, that an affirmative motion to deny stating the reasons why, because, you know, a motion to approve is usually going to be because it's, you know, it's, I think it's best for the village, it meets the standards, it fails, majority of you don't think so, it's a good idea to let Sonia and Michael know, well, here's, I think this would have a bad effect on the neighbors, I think there's no way to adequately deal with the headlights in this drive-through, I think it's, the idling issue is not going to work in this location because of the lot size. And that, by saying all those things, that, you know, yeah, okay, motion to deny for the following reasons, it just follows, instead of having to infer them. You can still infer them, but it just makes it easy. And it's also, it's also a recommendation, right? I mean, your job is to make a recommendation. Well, a, a motion to recommend approval that fails is effectively a negative recommendation, but I think it's a little cleaner and better practice to have a recommendation to deny.
And another thing to keep in mind on motions is there are times when, you know, a motion may, a motion to approve may fail with certain conditions, but you know from discussion that maybe if, with a different set of conditions, it, it could pass. So, there's nothing wrong with somebody making a second motion to approve with different conditions or having further discussions on what conditions might be acceptable to try to reach a, a recommendation.
And so, let's, let's get into another thing that we've dealt with at the village board level here and at other communities too, is under Robert's Rules, in order to avoid wasteful discussion, there's a general rule that without a motion and a second, you're not supposed to really discuss stuff. And the purpose of that rule is so there's enough interest, at least two of you want to do something about this that's on the agenda. If no one wants to even make a motion, let's move on to the next item, right? That's the purpose of Robert's Rules. But in, in many cases, that's not going to be an issue. Well, you're going to have, you sound like, oh, I'm not interested in making a motion. I mean, so, it's, it's okay to talk about the issue before there's a motion.
That, that's what they've been doing.
Yeah. It's perfectly okay. And to try to see... And to try to see if there's a consensus, because otherwise you run into, "Well, what motion were we on? Did this condition, was that included in the motion?" So especially at your commission, it's probably best to have a general discussion that morphs into leading to some kind of a motion.
Otherwise, it can become really convoluted, so.
Sure.
And you withdraw motions and amend them a million times.
Yeah, perfectly okay.
Okay, so variations, after the general materials here, which end at page 24, we've got this motion, or this memo on variations and hardship, okay? And I've given this memo in past years to the planning commission, to the board, but it was updated for purposes tonight, and not much has changed, although it now reflects the fact that you're a combined commission, because I think the last time that I handed it out, you were separate. But it talks about variations because variations are probably one of the most challenging things, if not the most challenging thing they can deal with, and they always seem to cause a lot of angst. As I mentioned earlier, you know, in the last couple of years, the planning commission looked at the standards because realized that your standards weren't completely in sync with state law because they didn't talk about practical difficulties as well as particular hardship, and they had kind of different, they were missing one of the things required by state law. So we refaceted the standards through several meetings and talking about them and looking at ones from a bunch of different communities that Sonia gathered to decide what would work for our community. And so these are the standards that you've been dealing with for these most recent variations. And the most important part of them is kind of this two-pronged approach at the beginning in A1 and A2, which really gets to this idea of practical difficulty and particular hardship. And we worked hard on that language in order to try to capture these more modern ideas of what could constitute a hardship. And hardship is one of the, is probably the toughest part of the standards. And when we talk about hardship, it's easier to say what is not hardship than what is. And case law is kind of reflective of that, and we have a list in here of some of the cases that have been decided on hardship. And you can see that the ones where they found that hardships were sufficient are few compared to ones that say, "These things are not sufficient to warrant variations." So that leads us to this general philosophy of variations. So going back to the origins of zoning, at the very beginning, it was a time when I think houses and structures were regarded as more fungible as well as trees. That's another thing that we've talked about, like, if you wanted to put a house somewhere, why wouldn't you just mow the trees down and get rid of them?
Then you could easily meet the setback.
Then you could meet the setback.
That 200-year-old oak, you just cut it down, and you don't have a hardship, it's just a tree.
Right.
That's not, that's not a creek running through your property that it's getting in the way of meeting the setback. Or, you know, you have a house you want to do an addition on, and the addition is going to mean increasing a non-conforming setback, and in order to meet it, it's going to really look weird, and the answer is they can just tear the house down and build a new one in compliance with the code. Isn't that what we want? And like, in most communities now, they would say, "No, not really. We're not really looking to maximize teardowns, and we're not looking to cut down mature trees." That's not a goal. In fact, their goal's the opposite.
Going back to the origins of variations, the classic cases, the examples we always use are, if I have a lot and it's generally the same as everybody else's lots, but it has a creek going through the middle, I can't put my house where everyone else has their building pad because there's a creek there, right? And so I need to be on one side or the other of the creek, so I'm going to be in one of the yard setbacks. That's just the way it is. Otherwise, I can't build on my property, and my property, you've made my property valueless through your zoning ordinance, okay? Another example is a severely sloping lot. If I am going to be in violation of a height requirement for this zoning district because I am up at the top, I'm a lot higher than I would be at the bottom, you know, I've got to build this weird sloping house that is going to be much higher than the allowed height at the peak because of the slope of my lot. That is a traditional zoning variation, okay?
Joel's got a quick question.
Yeah.
With regards to the lot with the creek, if the lot was sufficiently large for someone to still build something on it that's reasonable, but the proposal was to build something much bigger, then it forces one into a variance situation.
Well, it's a balance. It depends, you've got to look at reasonable. So if you have a, you know, let's say, an subdivision or a series of lots that are an acre, and the market generally, you know, you have a certain number of square feet in a house, and you could build and meet the setbacks, but it's going to be half that size, it's probably getting to be kind of not reasonable. If you, if with a moderate setback variation, you could get a house that is 75% of, does that make sense?
It does, and I'm thinking kind of the, maybe I've got enough room to build a two-bedroom house versus a five-bedroom. If two-bedroom houses are selling, does that make it okay?
Yeah, market matters. Here's another one. You've got, people wanted, you know, there were some areas where you've got, the house was built with like a one-car attached garage. It's this tiny little thing. And in a modern, you know, it really is difficult to sell something with that kind of garage. Maybe in 100 years, it'll be great because no one will have cars, but for right now, the market, it makes it very difficult. So if a variation, because of how that house was built, and you want to preserve, you don't want to encourage teardowns, you can, with a modest variation, you can get a two-car garage. Now, are you entitled to three, even though a lot of people want three? Those are all things that go into this reasonableness, which is not, it's not a bright-line test.
Which is in the eye of the beholder.
Yep, so, well, yeah.
It's not a bright line.
It's subjective to some degree.
So anyways, getting back to the traditional standards, those are related to topography and the actual physical conditions of the land. Whereas what we're saying now, and this is reflected in our new set of standards, is that we in Riverside in particular, value our historic housing stock, and we value our 200-year-old oak trees. And so we are not going to say, "No, we're not going to give you relief because you could just cut down that tree," or you could just knock down that long existing garage with the clay tile roof or whatever else. We don't want to encourage those sorts of activities. So we can take not just the physical attributes of the property into account, but the location of the structures on those and the location of significant trees and other natural features.
But that isn't to say you get the variation, it's to just say, "Those things can be considered."
Yes.
Again, you've got to look at the whole circumstance. You don't want people to use, you know, and people will do this. They'll say, "Well, I'm trying to save trees." They use a, you know, like, a thin ad to like drive the, drive the whole camel through the eye of the needle, you know? And so it's okay to be aware of that and to be skeptical, but there was this view that, "Well, trees can't be hardship, they're not qualifying." It all depends. You've got to look at the situation. Now, they can be considered, can be.
So what you just said, Michael, where in the standards for us granting a variation request is that, or is it not specific?
It's in A1, where we talk about presence of an existing use or structure.
Whether conforming or non-conforming.
Right, and so traditional, if you look, you know, 30 years ago, the zoning standards, variation standards, didn't talk about structures that same way.
Okay.
Okay?
Because the idea is a legal non-conforming use in the traditional sense is suffered to exist, suffered. Legally, the goal with legal non-conforming uses is to eliminate them and to have complete conformity with the current standards. That is, that's the traditional view.
And the thing to keep in mind is the uniqueness of Riverside. So if you think of a brand-new subdivision on one of the far outlying, far-flung suburbs, you know, and somebody builds it and they've got, every lot is 50 by 125, and the building pads are all going to be in the same spot because they're all working with the same setbacks, and there's only five different types of houses that your developer is putting in there. And if they, if one person comes to you and says, "I want a variation to put this addition on," what is to, if you grant that, how do you ever deny another one?
Right.
Okay? Whereas Riverside, there are almost no situations like that. And so one of the things that we talk about is precedent. People have concerns about precedent, and in cases where you can draw, you're taking these set of facts that are presented to you, applying them to the standards, and if those facts involve different shaped lots and different kinds of structures and any kind of other differences that you can draw on, variations are so fact-driven that there is not a ton of presidential value in a place like Riverside, unless it's something like a fence in a front yard or other things. But when somebody's talking about maybe where to put their garage in the back, and they have, this house has been here for 100 years, and these trees are there-
Shape of the lot is what it is.
The lot is pie-shaped, and that's why they can only be in this particular location.
Right. But beyond that, what you were discussing regarding like the unique housing structure, there's a portion of Riverside that has a unique housing structure. It's something that we want to preserve. So arguably, let's say someone wants to put an addition on or a second bay in their garage, is it acceptable for us to look at two petitions, one with a house that was built in the 1970s and one with a house that was built in 1910 differently? Because one house is much more appealing and attractive, and they're proposing perhaps an addition that includes another bay with a clay tile roof and exactly matches the house, as opposed to another petitioner that's proposing just sticking on an addition with Hardywood or something to have their second bay, and their house is not particularly nice.
Okay, the answer to that, the answer to that question is you combine a series of things, some of which, the answer is yes, and some of which is no. So the distinction between 1970 and 1910, a subjective conclusion that 1970's architecture is crap, for example, you know, that one-
You have to visualize what I'm talking about.
That one, that one doesn't really, that's not a good idea. That's not, that's not appropriate. What we're talking about generally is a general way to say that the structure itself, if someone comes in and they present a variation petition, we still have to be concerned about neighbors, we have to be concerned about all of that, but they come in with a variation petition that says, "We want to preserve this existing 1970 true ranch house, okay? And we want to do an addition," and we could go up, but it would destroy the character of this ranch house. And so we want a setback variation so that we don't create a monstrosity. We were going to maintain the roof line, we've, we're putting whatever it is here so that it matches, you know, and, you know, materials to some extent, you can at least ask about, generally materials are not, but architectural significance, going to show you how seriously they are about what they're trying to preserve, that's okay.
So we had another, I mean, in the few months, we had another petition a few meetings ago, and there was a proposal for an addition which did not match the existing house at all architecturally. Now, I don't know if they had proposed something different that was more symmetrical and matched that house. Would it have been appropriate for us to consider that in a different way than we did?
Yeah, I think so. I think one of the, one of the things you look at when you say, if you're looking at, does a hardship exist, is the hardship trying to deal with preserving an existing house in a way that makes sense and preserves its architectural integrity? If they come in and they say, "We want to preserve the existing house," but it, there's no evidence they're trying to maintain the integrity of it, they're really maybe just trying to do the cheapest thing.
Right, I think one commissioner even came out and said, "I don't, what you're proposing is not, to me, architecturally attempting to preserve the architecture of this house."
Right, yeah.
And I think that that is appropriate if you find the addition is completely different than what they're saying, but at the same time, they were saying, "Well, we're doing this for architectural reasons."
Right, and in order to preserve-
But with some probing and some looking at the design, you didn't find that convincing, and I think that's appropriate.
Yeah. It really has to do with something I said before, which is if people are saying, "We're doing something to preserve trees," or "We're doing something to preserve this style of house without doing, you know, we'd have to do a teardown, we'd have to destroy the architecture." If it's, if it's, if an objective person can look at it and say, "Well, it doesn't appear you're attempting to preserve the architecture," it would look, it's basically the same if you went up, then you're not really in that ballpark.
So while variations should not be easy to get, we don't want to be so caught up in the technical aspects of our code that we're encouraging people to tear things down because they don't, we're not leaving them any alternative.
Yeah, it is just such a mess, and there's really no hold.
Now, there's a lot, there's a huge amount of middle ground between that, and that's where most of these fall, and it's, that's where it becomes tough for you guys.
Do we want to go through the questions?
Yeah, let's, so Sonia took the time to take all the questions everyone submitted and kind of put them in a format that we can kind of run through here. So why don't we talk about some of these, because there are some really good ones.
And she, Sonia took them and put them into categories, which is nice. So, you want to just work through them?
Yep.
Okay, so procedural questions. Number one, what are the commission's options for requesting petitioner to submit more information at a future date? For example, if we have no real facts based on determination on whether our requirements are met or commission's not presented with reliable information on whether drainage problems will result, again, we talked about drainage before, but basically, the fundamental question is, what are the options for requesting a petitioner to submit more information? So, the key here is to, the petitioner has the right not to be delayed, but, but, the commission has the obligation to decide based on the record. So the answer may be that, you know, the majority of you are not inclined to approve it based on the evidence that's in front of you, but you might be willing to consider approving it if more information was brought back. That can be made clear to the petitioner, and if the petitioner wants to come back, then it's, you continue it. But the petitioner should be allowed to say, "You know, I don't want to go back and do that. I think it would be productive, I think it'd be too much, I'm already at the end of my budget, I want to move forward with what I've presented to you." Then you should just take it, the record's been made, they don't want to present more evidence, and, you know, that's what you do. A more difficult case is when you have objectors that want the matter to be continued without a recommendation so that they can, you know, develop more evidence based on questioning. That's a tougher one. If it's the first continuance, if it's the first time up, I think, you know, you're probably well within your rights to continue it if you think there's a good faith basis for it. When it gets beyond that, I'd be hesitant.
Yeah, there are cases where objectors will just try to drag things out as long as they can in the hopes that they'll wear down the petitioner and they'll give up.
So.
And so we have to be cognizant.
But I think without objectors, if you're just dealing with a petitioner and your own sort of feelings about wanting more, it should be clear that they have the option to say, "We want to stamp on the record we've developed." And then you vote how you feel.
Second one, how free can PCC members be, or should they be, in discussing alternative plans for an application that might avoid the need for variation or call for less extensive variation? Can the PCC just suggest that a petitioner go back to the drawing board?
So here again, I think the answer is very similar to the last one. You can discuss alternative plans as long as it's clear that the petitioner doesn't have to go back and redo the plans.
Right, so I think a way that you guys often have phrased it, or at least sometimes, is, "Have you considered this?" Right? So if somebody's telling you, "I designed it like this, and this is what we're asking So, so if somebody's telling you, "I designed it like this and thi- this is what we're asking for," it's perfectly, it's perfectly acceptable to ask, "Have you considered this?" But, but then to say, "Well, we're not gonna consider it unless you, unless you go back and do it a certain way or, or take another crack at it," um, they could say, "Well, you know, this is our presentation and, and we'd like to..."
We, we're ready to move on to the village board. You know, they want, we wanna vote. The other thing I think, was one other point I was gonna make. Oh, the other thing to keep in mind when you're suggesting alternatives is keep in mind that it may involve, depending on how different the alternative is, it may involve having to start over anyway.
Right, because we publish these notices, especially for variation, with the variation that they're requesting. And if the alternative you're suggesting, and we've had this happen here actually with a, with a garage variation, if the alternative you suggest, uh, pushes them to need some different variation or a greater variation than was published for, then we have to start the process over with new publication-
New notice.
...to the neighbors. Uh, because we, we can do something less than what has been requested, but we can't do something different or, or greater. So that's something to keep in mind.
So to what extent should we try to get into alternative plans? Like if something clearly-
Depends on the case.
Okay.
It really, it's just like, every case stands on its own. There, you may have a great idea about, you, you may hear a neighbor complain about something, you may have a petition and you may think, "You know, what if you just moved this window?" I mean, I'm, you know, making it up, but what if you changed the, the roof design so it doesn't go that way or you, it may come to you. And then it's fine to suggest those things.
But, but often I think what you'll find, and I, I'm not an architect, but it, it seems to me like when they're asked these questions, they've played around with these different alternatives and they'll often have a reason for why something is not practical or why they did it a certain way. And so your questioning can kind of get at that and, and then you have to make a determination, "Well, they've, they've thought of it and this is what they've come to us with, so how, how much are we gonna push it?"
So, yeah, like your opinion may change depending on their answer, so it's a real give and take. Which gets back to the give and take is not okay, it's advisable. It's not just okay, it's, it's perfectly okay. Again, as long as it's not viewed as you're extorting changes in how they wanna proceed. You're really trying to say, "We'd like to give you a positive recommendation," it sounds like a majority would be, would favor this.
And some of it can come down to conditions as well, if you're talking about a special use or a site plan and, um, you know, we wanna do things like shielding or provide an additional landscaping, or maybe landscaping isn't sufficient and we want a fence to provide the screenings instead. You know, have you considered a fence? You know, I see you went with evergreens and that's nice, however, you know, we, we think a fence in addition to that would be, would be good, would be considered that. And you could have that conversation and then you can add that as a condition onto your approval if after that discussion that, that's happened. Some things won't be things that are really gonna change the project as a whole. When you're looking at variations versus special uses or a site plan, sometimes it's a little easier to, to incorporate than, than others.
So, the next one is, is pretty clear. Should, does the commission ever reconsider reopen matters? Generally speaking, you know, the idea is, "What if we think we made a mistake?" The answer is, you really can't. If you've taken, if you've, if you've made the recommendation, you've lost jurisdiction of that matter, it's, it's going to the village board. Having said that, you know, uh, each of you or one of you that feels that way can contact a village board member to see if there's any interest on the board based on the record to reman. The board has the authority to send it back.
Right, there's specific authority in the zoning code and in state law for them to reman matters back to you where new information has come to light or other circumstances or they just want you to look at a different aspect of something.
Right, so, so that could be done, but you can't on your own say, "Oh, we wanna revisit this" because it's kind of like a, a court decision. Once the ruling is made, if an appeal is taken or you send it out to the board, it's in their hands. You, it's not your product anymore. You've moved it on. It's out of your hands.
Next, how should the PZC address statements of fact by a petitioner that should or could be more properly regarded as a desire or design preference?
It's usually-
The answer is not, not, those are typically aren't gonna go to your standards, um, so...
Yeah, you mean, usually it happens the other way around where the commission wants to express its desires of design preference. But, you know, basically, the petitioners can do that though. They, what they're doing is they're trying to sell their-
Right.
-project. And so it's not improper for them to tell you, "We think this is gonna be a great benefit to the community, we're gonna use great materials, we're gonna, you know, use colors that match, we're gonna," you know, all of that. They can, they can do that and put on their, you know, their dog and pony show, uh, but it's really not part of your standards.
Right, so, so you just give it the weight that it deserves, which is not a, a lot. Okay, in discussion of individual aesthetic preferences, Commissioner, petition relevant as part of the discussion deliberation, that's kind of the, the same idea. No, and, and one of the things that I know when we had those longtime commissioners on, uh, the, the board is they would talk about, I think there was some debate in the, in the past about, you know, villages have the authority to have design review commissions and, and to, to weigh in on designs of, of buildings. And Riverside has always taken the position that we're not gonna do that. And so, you know, I don't, it's been, I don't think anyone's had that debate since, since I've been here in the last eight years, but, but at some time in the past that decision was made.
Just that, just, was there ever like fifty years ago a design standard? Or have you never in the whole history of Riverside?
And in fact, the explicit authority for having those kind of commissions, I, I think people had them for a long time, but the explicit authority was just added to the state law, you know, ten years ago probably. Is burden approved for a variation on the petitioner? Yes, is the answer to that. Is that burden to sustain all of the standards in, in, for a variation, which means the petitioner must show to the PZC and the PZC must find it's more likely than not the standards have all in truth than met. So we kind of covered that while we were talking about it. I mean, you, you guys have a lot of power to infer, there's a big range of petitioners, you shouldn't penalize them necessarily, um, for, for not being as sophisticated as, as other, other ones. Uh, but at the same time, it, you know, they do have to present something for you guys to hang your hat on, right? Uh, because we're not, we're not giving variations out like candy and, and we want uh, so, some information to, to, to make a reasonable decision based on. And one of the things that we talked about is you guys in turn, kind of getting to the bottom of these things by, by turning the tables on them and asking them some questions that get to the standards.
So like sometimes you'll have somebody step in front of you, not often because you've, at least somewhat sophisticated petitioners, but, but I've seen it where someone gets up, they want a variation and they just tell you why this is gonna be a great project. Are there any questions?
It's gonna be great.
And it's like, "Well, okay, yeah, we have some questions." So, one of the things you have to show is hardship and that means your circumstances are unique. Can you tell us why you think you can't meet the code? What's, what's, what's the problem with that? You can use different wording, you know, and not use legalese and, and get a record. And, and, and I think you need to do that. You shouldn't just deny somebody because they, they didn't say the right magic words. You know, your, your duties go beyond that. But on the other hand, you don't make their record for them, but you gotta ask the questions. What's your hardship? Have you talked to the neighbors? We don't see any neighbors here. Are you aware whether they know about this project? And they may say, "Well, yeah, I've got, matter of fact, one of them wrote a letter." "Oh, can we, well, maybe we should make that part of the record." You know, those kinds of things can come out where the people just don't think about it, some of, some of them.
So, so I've heard a commission say, "Well, you know, after an hour-long talk, I didn't hear anything about property values, so that standard's not met and I'm voting against that." And, and that's, you know, not really, not the best practice.
Jake, can I, can I just add a couple of things? Um, at the last meeting, President Self made a point when we were discussing a variance that you denied, that in my design, the burden of proof is, is significant. It's designed because it goes to the integrity of our zoning code.
Yes.
So it should be a pretty significant burden of proof. But can you kind of take, take them through the votes required to approve a variance and what happens if a variance is denied and then what, there's a different standard in the board law?
Right, for a negative recommendation, right. Yeah, so the way-
Cause, let me just, cause what I hate hearing when I was up in your seats was, "You're just an advisory board anyway." That's usually what happens at the end when you're tired of kind of being the guy that has to say no. But you're, you're, you're advisory, but depending on your judgment, it does place a different burden at the board level. Maybe if you could help them understand that.
Yeah, so as a, as a non-home rule community, the, the home rule community can set it up any way it wants, but as, as a non-home rule and under your code, positive recommendations are treated as any new matter that comes before the village board, which basically is that a majority can, uh, is, is needed to approve that item. But what, what the rule is, if there's a negative recommendation, the recommendation is to deny a variation, the law requires two-thirds of the trustees to be in favor of overturning it, which still means four, which typically is a majority, but there's an important distinction. Notice, I said the statute says two-thirds of the trustees. It's one of the very, very few cases where in, a president cannot break a tie. So, what that means is if it ends up three-three, you think, "Oh, two-thirds, well, four, it's trustees." So, three-three means that the negative recommendation stands, no matter what the village president thinks about it. He's not entitled to vote on that. So it's a, so there's a, there's more weight given to a, a negative recommendation than a positive one, is the point.
I'd say I think the other point too, at, at the, at the commission level, doesn't, don't you need four affirmative votes to-
Yes, correct, correct.
For, for something to be a positive recommendation, you need the four affirmative votes. So, so while there may be five of you here and the vote is three-two, that doesn't go to the board as a positive recommendation, it goes as no recommendation.
Which is negative.
With a vote.
Yeah, which, which a function is, is a, is a negative.
Right.
A, a, a po, a no recommendation, meaning a positive recommendation can't be made, functions as the negative.
Right. So, so I think part of what trustee said of it is trying to convey is although, you know, you can, sometimes people will say, "Well, you're just a recommending body, these things matter, your votes matter," uh, and impacts how the board has to deal with these. And so, uh, it, a negative recommendation carries some weight.
Right, well, and also, how much weight they carry, there is a legal, the legal point I just made, but there's also the policy point, which is, th- there's no set way that elected trustees have to, what weight they have to give a recommendation, whether it's positive or negative. But some give them great weight. There are some that, I mean, you'd almost have to move heaven and earth for them to vote differently from what the recommendation is. They feel very, I've seen trustees feel very strongly about that. And others less so. You know, others feel like it's the, it's the commission's job to be, you know, to make the record and, and to, to make the recommendation. And, and some of them even feel like it's their job to say, "No more than we do." Like that, that's, I don't know, you know, there, there's no right answer to any of that. People have their own views they bring to being an elected official, just like you bring your history and views to the commission and the zoning code, but those things are all in play. Doug?
I think, man, I've had a discussion today with someone from another village where their plan commission had unanimously recommended approval of a special use. The board denied it, they're now in court. And the, you know, the feeling is that they're gonna lose in court being pardoned because the plan commission had made a unanimous recommendation.
Yeah, well, and especially, yeah, no, I've, I've, I've seen that happen and, and if it's a, any, anything like a controversial issue, it's a, could be a real problem. Yeah, but, but certainly, a court's gonna, gonna look at that, absolutely. Yep.
So, um, we have certain findings that we need to make, um, our recommendation based on.
Correct.
Does the board as well?
Yes, they're, they're bound by the same standards.
Absolutely. Yeah, they are.
So, so generally, if it's not controversial, the, the ordinance will provide that they're simply adopting your findings of fact as their own, okay? And then, and then that's the end of the matter. In a case where they want to, to do something different than what this board's had, they, they generally will say, "We disagree with this particular finding of fact by, by the board or disagree with their findings altogether and we're reaching a different conclusion" and, and explain why.
Yeah, 'cause those standards are mandated by law, by common, by property right law, really, because what you're doing when you're, you have a zoning code is you're affecting the default, uh, which in a free country like the United States, as you buy property, you can do what you want with it, right? I mean, you start from that premise, it's my property. And so zoning is an inroad on that, okay? When you live in close proximity and we have these standards and, and all that is perfectly good. And the standards strike that balance where when you say no, right, to a variation, which is basically, you gotta, you, "My property is so different, your rules shouldn't apply to me." Variation standards show whether that is right, whether, whether under law it's going to, that infringement of property rights, that saying no to your plan is gonna be upheld as a reasonable imposition on your property rights. And so that's why you have to follow, so does the board. And you have, and you have some discretion, but note where, where, where we've modified the, some of the, some of the rules, they're in favor of property rights, right? By broadening what you can consider as a variation, that's never gonna be a problem for property rights because it's, it gives you a little more leeway potentially. So, it's never gonna be wrong.
But Tracy, your point's a good one. We have the exact same standard you do and, and you, you've heard, we've heard trustees say, "Well, we have a bigger picture responsibility." That's not true.
Right.
I mean, it's the same standard.
Same standard. The court would look at it, this exact, they would, court, an opinion would follow the same factors, right down the line. All right. All right, so keep going.
If a variation is granted and the variation's never acted on and becomes void, if a person later petitions for the same basic variation, uh, whether or not the petition is the same exact person is any weight given to the fact that the variation was initially granted. That, that's kind of a decision for you. Uh, you, you know, you're a different plan commission, it's a different presentation, it may be the same request, uh, but maybe there's objectors, different neighbors.
Yeah, I think in general, yes. It really depends. It's kind of like what Michael-
It's not binding, I guess, is the point.
Exactly. What, what Michael talked about earlier in special uses comes up a lot, which is, can we, and he talked about this, how you can place a condition on a special use so that it won't run with the land, that it's limited to that applicant. But keep in mind that the special use itself is tied fundamentally, because it's a zoning decision, to the land. And so if someone new comes in and wants to maintain that business and they're willing to operate under the same conditions as the previous one, and you say no, you know, and they challenge it, it's kind of like the courts could look at, "Well, like, why not?" You know, you see what I mean? And so variation, like, if, if somebody looked at all the standards and it was truly related to this lot and this design or whatever, and they wanna do the same thing, well, you know, yeah, you probably should keep that in mind anyway, but you may have different questions that weren't asked or weren't brought up, but you could come to a different conclusion. It's a whole new matter.
Absolutely.
But it's certainly not completely irrelevant that somebody thought the same variation was worthy of being granted.
Right. As a petitioner, you probably rely heavily on that fact. Okay, applying the standards, how do we apply the purpose and intent section to our deliberat- deliberations and decisions? So this is a, a reference to the fact that, that the, the zoning ordinance has purpose and intent section at the beginning, and there's even a reference in the variation standards, uh, to, to something being, implementing the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. The, 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 the answer to that is that it, you're not really doing much to apply the purpose and intent specifically, other than to confirm that this is generally not gonna be something that is running contrary to, to the, the reason that we have our zoning ordinances. So you're not really drilling down on that in any significant way.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's right. I think where it comes up is when you're in a gray area, keep in mind what the purpose is when you're finding your way to what the gray area means.
Yeah.
Can we discuss the meaning of a particular standard? The conditions upon which the petition for variation is based would not be applicable generally to other property within the same zoning classification. What specific conditions are being referenced here? Is a particular physical or other unusual condition of specific property involved mentioned?
Right, so this, this one is, this has come up here before at the board level, where someone wants a variation- wants a variation, that basically, they're saying, this is unique to me, and it turns out, it's not so much unique to that property as there's been a change in what people are wanting, demanding, and what the market is willing to bear. Garage size was a goo- good example. And so, if you, when you start seeing the same variations coming up again and again, you should consider a text amendment, if you're, if they're, if they seem wise, because they really aren't variations anymore, they're a change in what the rules should be.
Right. And, and to apply that to the garage standard, so let's say that we had a fifty-year-old, uh, maximum square footage standard for our accessory structures, but that's no longer practical in today's modern world, where two, two-car garages are the, are the norm, and you have person after person coming to you looking to, to do a little bigger garage than is allowed by your code, and you're generally okay with that, cause you get it, right? So i- instead of just dealing with the variation over and over, we, we do a text amendment to increase the, the swiftly.
Yeah. I think you have to be sensitive to that too, because sometimes you'll see, you know, somebody say, well, there's no hardship here, cause this is true of all properties with this. And I mean, that's true, but that's not, it's not just maybe you deny it, I mean, maybe you deny it, but you have a discuss, staff has a discussion with them, hey, you know, or sometimes they even morph the variation into a text amendment, you know, you just go back and republish, because it's like you can see the wisdom of what's being offered, but to handle it as a variation, it, it really isn't functioning as a variation at all.
And I, and I think we did that with, with some aspect of the garages and the design.
Yeah.
We did.
Right. I think with the, we attempted to with the garages. What we got into was more of a clarification-
Okay.
-versus a change in code. Um, but the idea was there to, to look into that, and then same with porches, you know, we kind of started having a lot of porches starting to come before us, and, you know, between the village board and the planning zoning commission, it was like, okay, we need to start, we need to start looking at if we're being too restrictive here in porches, and how do we encourage porches, but still protect whatever it is we felt like we were needing to protect.
Cause we found, the, the, the village found itself in the position of denying these porch variations, which people generally felt, well, we want to encourage these open porches, so why are we denying these? Because, just because our, our code reads a certain way, and so the, the greater policy discussion took place. In order to, to encourage something that we generally are supportive and that fits with the character of the village, can we make text amendments that, that, that don't make people go through this variation process and don't put us in this position?
Especially with existing porches, you know, so, you know, we, we dealt with the existing porch situation as well as a new porch situation. So both of those discussions were had as we were vetting through that process.
So, this, this conditions requirement, we, we may not be able to say yes, that this is met, but it could spark a discussion of, well, this actually is not a bad idea, and maybe we should look into-
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Amending the code to allow this.
Because it's a, it's a-
And officially-
Cause it's a change of general applicability rather than a change like, these rules don't apply, shouldn't apply to my property because it has this unique situation.
You know, if we had a restriction that garages should only be four, you know, you couldn't have a garage larger than four hundred square feet, or, you know, if we had something that was in that range, maybe that's something we need to look at, because a modern two-car garage is typically four hundred and twenty square feet. Um, you know, something along those lines, that's, you know, that's a conversation then that we start having. So we've had three people come before us now that need a variation in order to do a garage in order to fit their two SUVs, cause they can't fit it in a twenty-by-twenty garage, cause then they can't close the garage door. So, you know, you start having those kind of conversations, and there are some communities that have that, like they have very strict restrictions on how large of a, you know, accessory building you can have. So, those are those kind of things that, once maybe you see two or three of them, do you start having that discussion about a text amendment versus-
Dealing with them.
-dealing with the variants. And that could even be on a staff level, I could say, okay, you know, you're the third person in two years that's come before with this type of thing. I think maybe the prudent way to do this is to do this through a text amendment, and then we have a conversation, whether that's a village-led amendment or a petitioner-led amendment.
Well, my question was gonna be, is how many is a lot? Cause two or three doesn't seem like a significant number to us. I mean, is it more-
It can be, it can be a lot if they're identical. Like if, if you can see that it's really the market that's driving this hardship, for example, the market of what people want, what's marketable, rather than, oh, my house sits this way and I want to do an addition, it's really like, this, this garage, I mean, won't work, or, you know, I, it's, I need, it's a gen, it's a more general applicability. And there's no bright line between those two things.
We, we use that emerging trend. It seems to be an emerging trend.
Yeah, that's right.
Something like that, we just say, okay, we're probably gonna see more of these.
Yep.
We've seen two of them, but we're probably gonna see more, and we probably need to figure out how to do it. And so we don't get all of them.
It can just be one.
Correct. And some of it's just a courtesy to your residents, cause if you see it's a general applicability and it's coming more and more, why make them go through, it's, you know, why make them go through it if you think, this is really a good idea? I can see this as a village-wide change.
Or something like, we see, like in the emerging trend, we find something that's more sustainable. We don't, we have a sustainable mission as, as, you know, the village in itself. If we see something that's going to incentivize people to do something in a more sustainable way, that's probably something we need to figure out and bring out as a text amendment, so it does provide some sort of incentive.
Okay. So the next one deals with, can a, can a non-conforming situation ever be used as a hardship? And we've answered that. It can be if it's a kind of structure that is a permanent structure, that is part of the lot, which again, generally wouldn't be an accessory structure, but it could be if your accessory structure was built to match a unique, you know, archi, you know, house, for example, and they, they want to preserve that and do something to it that might not be allowed otherwise. So, it, it can be. It can be. Uh, you wanna do the next one?
Sure. For variation, petition presents arguments or limited evidence on an element, what is the PCC's legal ability to find its evidence is inadequate or not convincing? To rely on our care, our experiences as Riverside residents, um, and sometimes we're not presented with counter evidence, or are we just making judgments after hearing only one side of the position? We've kind of talked through some of that too. Uh, does anyone have any further inquiries as to how that works?
Next one, is there a limit on a waiting period, repeated variation requests? And you know, yes, there is, right? You're limited, went before, if you've been denied to reapply. But the issue here, it becomes nuanced, because what the question goes on to posit is that someone comes in with a, with a variant on, on the original request, so that it's different to some little or greater degree. And, and so the situation here is that, the rule is a board rule created by ordinance, so there are a couple ways to look at it. One is, somebody, you, you should never refuse, like staff will never refuse an application for a variation, even if it's within the, the time period. They're gonna say, you can't even file it. What they'll say is, please be aware of this. Now, if someone comes in with a completely different variation, let's say they want to do an addition completely different, they need a different kind of setback variation cause they knew that one wouldn't fly, that, that's a new variation. If someone just tweaks an existing one, you know, staff may feel like, hey, you're just trying to get around waiting here, right? But it, it's also true that if the new approach addresses the concerns and the standards are met, the board may decide, and you can recommend, that the, the year period be waived. And the board has the authority to do that, cause they created the rule.
So, so think of one of the situations we talked about earlier, where you guys are inquiring about alternatives, and maybe a light bulb goes on in the architect's head, and, and, uh, you know, you guys have suggested something that maybe they hadn't thought of, and you guys, they realize they're not going to, or you guys vote to deny the one that they propose. Um, I, I think you guys would, in that sense, encourage them to come back if, if this alternative is gonna work for everybody, so we don't want to, to have this never be allowed. It, it is a board-created rule, and we can waive it in appropriate circumstances. So in that instance where you say, go back to the drawing board, and they do, uh, we would want to allow it.
Yeah. And it also isn't gonna happen much, because usually what happens is, is if, I've seen this conversation come up, which is, you know, if you're denied, you know, if alternatives are out there and they kind of say, you know, they don't, they're not ready to present them, so you know, if you're denied, you gotta wait, um, do you want to withdraw your petition and maybe redo it at a future time? That's more common when that's set up, because the possible alternative is already on the table, and people want to be free to just reapply what they want without even dealing with this rule.
Yep.
It, it would be rare that someone would go all the way to the mat, and then, you know, within a couple months, like, oh, you know, I took all those things to heart, and we, we're trying again, so. But anyway, that, the rule is there, but it can be gone around if it makes sense.
Okay. Standards for special use permit, in particular, one standard, at least one year has elapsed since any denial by the village board of any prior application for a special use that would have authorized substantially the same use of all a part of the site and conditions in the area have sa- and conditions in the area have substantially changed.
I think we've kind of talked about that a little bit, you know, in that, you know, if you've approved a special use for something in one location, but you're gonna deny it in another location, you have to kind of say, why is this not okay at this location versus another one where there is one and it's okay. Um, what they're saying here is, it's a year later, it's been denied, what's changed? You know, they have to be able to show that something has changed.
Changed conditions.
Like condition.
Like, for example, the neighboring, you know, the, the budding residential property has now undergone a map amendment and this, it's been torn down. So now you're, you know, it's, it's a vacant commercial lot where it was before a, a single-family house or something, you know, that's a good change condition that happened in, in that period that could lead to a different result.
Okay. To what extent should PCC consider or be guided by documented history, such as past deliberations and decisions by the PCC and village board? Uh, you know, you're, we, there's, there's not a comprehensive way to know that history other than through, uh, either staff having some knowledge and providing it to you, or, or, uh, the longevity of certain members on the, on the PCC. So, when we had these, these people who had been on here for fifteen years and could fill us in on the two thousand and five debates about redoing this portion of the code, that was a, that was a, a tool that the PCC was able to take advantage of. Um, but generally, you know, you may not have that knowledge. It's, it's fine to inquire, and, you know, maybe contact Sonja ahead of time, have we, have we dealt with a, a special use like this before, um, and, and try to get some additional background.
But also, it's, I think, of limited value for the reasons Michael said, which is, variations and special uses are very fact-intensive.
Yep.
They're very fact-intensive, and so you really need to, to base it on the evidence you have before you, and conditions change too. Now, the one area where you don't get many of these, but where you do want to know the precedent is, Michael and I were talking about earlier today, is where legal conclusions were made. If you have an appeal as to what the text of the zoning code means, where you have final decision-making authority, you want to know what, what past commissions have decided about the meaning of a certain term if they weren't happy with staff, cause that should dictate, if you should give it the same meaning, it's been set. But there are many of those that Sonja knows, so.
Good. Because that's not fact-driven the same way, it is, it is a legal interpretation of a particular zoning code provision. Okay?
So the next one deals with history as well, history of construction in the village, take it into account when considering variances and code changes. I mean, you know, that, to the extent it's relevant, it's appropriate. Um, what about changes of the zoning code over time? Is it relevant to the commission that a code provision was changed at some time to apparently deal with some problem or weakness? If so, is the commission ever provided with the history of a code provision in making its decision? And then there's an, an example there with the porches, and we talked about it. To the extent staff is aware of that, and, and you're interested in it, it'll be shared. Institutional knowledge is good, but it's, you know, it's limited. You know, we, we, we deal with it when we look at code changes too, cause we look, we know, we know a, a code change was made maybe fifteen years ago, and then we've, we've looked at the minutes, and they were singularly unhelpful, um, to, to, you know, sometimes they are helpful, but you just never know. And, and so to the extent you know, it's called legislative history, right? When lawyers deal with it, it's, you know, sometimes looking at the debates will help clarify an ambiguity, more often they don't. Occasionally, they're very helpful, you know, but, so, I hope that answers the question. It's of limited value just because it's hard to get at, and not practical given your time constraints.
The, the next, the next question's a real interesting one. If a structure is built with village approval, but in fact it's non-conforming and was not required to get a variation, is the structure still non-conforming, or is the village effectively bound to its mistaken determination that the structure isn't conformant?
There's a clear answer to this one.
Yes, go ahead.
There's a clear answer to this one. So, you have a situation where somebody gets a building permit, and something was built, and it was slightly off. Let's say the setback is slightly off, a little, it encroaches where originally it was designed not to encroach at all, not much, an inch. Um, and this is discovered, and it's discussed, and there are a number of options. The, the, the village could issue a citation for fines, it could go to chancery court and try to seek, you know, an order to make the, the, the structure compliant. Uh, you know, those, those are enforcement options. So, the, the question here is, if the village in its discretion decides it would be a waste of resources to try to get strict compliance, because a court is unlikely to, to, to expect a property order to spend, you know, tens of thousands or a hundred thousand dollars to, to alter a structure, but it's an inch, does that make it legal? The answer's no. Uh, it would become a, a legal non-conforming structure, but it wouldn't be conforming. The only way to make it legally conforming would be to seek a variation and as, and claim as a hardship, an inadvertent mistake as to what was built in the field, and saying that this would, it would be ridiculous cost to make it strictly compliant, and so you're asking for a variation to allow it legally to stay where it is. Then it's not legal non-conforming, it's actually conformant, subject to the variation and any conditions that are put on it. And there may be, there could be like a condition put on it that will allow it to remain, but, but no additions can, you know, whatever, can, can go in, follow that encroachment or something like that.
So, so a question based on that, if, if they do decide to pursue a variation, whether it's recommended or not, and it's denied, what, what position is that placed?
Legal non-conforming. It would be legal non-conforming.
So like, I think there was a driveway situation in the last year, when I was on, someone wanted to build a driveway, and we built a driveway, and it wasn't done right. Um, so someone complained, so he, that person was at that point in a status of non-conformance, and the variation request was denied, and so at that moment, he was in the status still of legal non-conformance, right?
Correct.
Not legal conformant.
And then keep in mind too, that in a given case where, where a, a municipality decides it doesn't want to spend taxpayer dollars to get somebody to move something, cause you know, the, the courts are very much, tend to favor the individual, and, and it's gonna involve a big expense, they're unlikely to order that, but the neighbor also has a cause of action. People within fifteen hundred feet, under a special section in the municipal code, have, if a village refuses to take action on a zoning violation, can take their own action. And then it's neighbor versus neighbor, you might get a different result, and, you know, it's, it's interesting, cause what people, what many people don't realize is, is this crazy provision in there, that if you sue your neighbor over their zoning violation and you win, you have to pay their attorney's fees, which is really not very common in, in the United States. So it actually can be far worse for you if the municipality doesn't bring that action and your neighbor does.
So it only becomes legally non-conforming if the village chooses not to enforce?
Correct. And, and time, and time goes by. Like, so, so for example, it's, it's not conforming, right? The, the municipality brings no action. And then, let's say the elections happen, and somebody new comes in five, four years later, and they think, you know, this thing always bugged me, we're gonna go into court on this. And there's a record that this was known all that time and no action was taken, if the city tries to get rid of it then, they will lose. You know, I mean, they will lose.
And then what happens if ten years- And then what happens if 10 years from now, someone tries to rebuild that driveway? And it was never made by anyone to construct a driveway? Is that now like illegally, you know, it's?
No, if it's, if it's, if it's legal non-con, anything legal non-conforming, first of all, there's a general rule that legal non-conformity is allowed to be maintained. Okay, you can't, you cannot replace legal, and, and maintained is also defined in the code. If it's, if it deteriorates with, to more than 50% or less than 50% of its market value, it has to be brought up to code.
Okay.
Right, so, so if they came in to, for a building permit to wholesale replacement of that and it's noted that it's, it's not conforming in some way, they'll be made to conform at that time.
But so in that situation, it's only a driver, but let's, you know, the fault was the person who did this work and no accounting in time? And then it's sort of like a fait accompli, it's there because there's really no way to?
Things that are there long enough are very difficult to get rid of, especially if, you know, someone could have found out, if they were there for a long period.
Lance?
Yeah, Doug?
I, I'm either misunderstanding what you're saying or you're saying something that's different than what I've always understood. If, I've always understood that the ultimate burden of compliance is not on the village, it's on the property owner, the architect, whoever.
Right.
So if the village approves a plan that conflicts with the zoning code, it gets built, the burden is, it's, it's still an illegal, non-conforming structure.
Correct.
And if they go for a variation and the village denies the variation, it's still an illegal, non-conforming structure.
That, that's correct, but at some point, it will become a legal non- if, if no action is taken, you, you will not be in-
If, if, if time goes by and no one catches it, it's 10 years later, that may be a different circumstance.
Well, actually, it's worse even if someone catches it and nothing is done.
Right.
That's the, that's, I mean, if someone-
Right, so, so if somebody illegally turned a house into a, a three flat, right? And you don't catch it till you're doing a particular compliance inspection, that's our first knowledge of it, of course, we can make them de-convert. That, that didn't become legal just because we didn't catch it, even if it was done 20 years ago, right? But, but I think what Lance is saying is, once we know that, if we choose not to pursue enforcement options, an additional time passes.
And also it depends on-
But, but does that make it, does that in and of itself make it legal? Or does that mean that a judge is likely to say it's illegal?
Well, it means a judge is likely to say you don't have to move it.
Right.
But, but I think for all, for all, for all practical, for, for all practical purposes though, it becomes, if you can't change it, it becomes a legal non-conforming use. Because it's going to be allowed to remain there. And whether it's pursuant to court order or inaction over a period of time, you know, you're, you're stuck with it, right?
If the court says so.
Well, all right, but at some point, a court, you know, a court will say so because you have, you, you don't have a good record. Or the cost differential is exorbitant.
So what does, what does the village do in that situation when they send the letter out? Because when you go to buy a piece of property, the village goes and does a conformance review.
Correct.
And it usually identifies the non-conforming items.
Right.
Right.
And those are all pursuant to our non-conforming ordinance. So typically, if I'm seeing something that is, you know, a house that's been there 50 years and it's, you know, eaves encroach into the side yard.
Eaves and bay windows.
You know, encroach into the side yard and so it's not meeting the five-foot setback. It's noted that the house encroaches into the setback. According to our code, it's a non-conforming use. They're allowed to maintain it, they're allowed to keep it. They're not allowed to build the house in the exact same location should it burn down to the ground. If it burns down to the ground, anything that gets built there has to comply to the code.
Yeah, so, so, and, and, and let's look at the important, this, we're getting into like more enforcement issues rather than zoning. But the important thing, when you become aware of a code violation, is to deal with it. But there are, there are a variety of ways to deal with it. Some of which, you know, are, you're, you're, you're going to be kind of stuck with it. If there's a setback where a brick wall is three-quarters of an inch within the setback field and the house is built by the time you realize it, there's no court, certainly not in a certain part of Cook County, that's going to order that to be moved, okay? It's just not, it just will not happen. Now, on the other hand, you have things like driveways, you have things like decks that might not have been built right. Now, one of the options you have, and I've done this, where you don't want to go to court over it, but you want, you want it documented, is you get an agreement, like things that have a shorter shelf life, you just get an agreement, like when, they agree that when the property transfers, it's going to be brought into compliance. That's one option. Or you get an agreement for a shelf life of, it's a driveway where, you know, whenever, you know, you put a 10-year window on it. So they get some value if they're, you know, again, and it depends on the facts. Because if you can show that they intentionally evaded the rules, then you got a much better chance of getting an order to move it. So it all, it all, the whole enforcement remedy thing. And, and sometimes if you don't think you're going to get it to move it, you try to get a high fine to make it, you know, an economic disincentive. But it, it won't be moved, so, okay? Does that, does that answer it?
Could do a whole new seminar and of course it'd-
Yeah, that's, yeah. But I understand your concern, Doug. It's not like, you know, but somehow it becomes a, a legal non-conforming in the same way as things that are existing when you change your zoning laws out from under them are legal non-conforming in a different way, because they were once street legal and you've made them illegal. Something can be the equivalent of legal non-conforming just because of the circumstances. That, that's different, because it was never really street legal, ever. And I understand the distinction. All right, let's go on.
All right. If we have to interpret an unclear zoning code provision, how do we do it? What authority we use, turn to the legal advisor. So, yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's, those are legal decisions. You have to, you, if there's a, a difference of opinion on the board, it's certainly, or on the commission, it's certainly appropriate to inquire. Uh, but, but a lot of times you guys may share a common understanding of what a particular term means. Um, a lot of them are defined within the code itself, uh, which is helpful in a lot of cases. So I, I'm not sure that's kind of a fact-specific thing that we would have to deal with. But it is appropriate to inquire of staff how they have interpreted a term or how we did it.
And so the example here, we didn't know what 1024C was, so we looked it up. And this provision is the provision that states that a code violation exists on each and every day that it is in existence. It's some, was it?
A new violation.
A new violation, was that yours, Jack, on that question?
I think so, yeah.
What it means? Okay, so that provision is both, it's, it's, it's written for the benefit of the municipality and it's both a shield and a sword. It's a shield in the sense that it makes clear under the law that a property owner can be cited again for a violation if it exists after they've already been cited and fined. That, because when they're fined, it's for the day that the citation was written. And that if it still exists a month later, if they've done nothing to correct it, they can and probably should be recited and they can't say, no, 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 I already paid my fine, this is unfair, it's double jeopardy, it's unconstitutional. They can't say that, okay? That's the purpose of that provision, that's one of the purposes. The other purpose is to allow for the municipality not to just issue a ticket, but to file a complaint that seeks daily fines as an incentive to correct the, the action. So that's what it's for.
Okay. So I know it's getting late, let's try to run through these last ones quick. Um, map and text amendments, we already talked about. Uh, can you explain how the village works to identify zoning code violations? So I think, Sonia, that's just a matter of, of through normal code and, you know, we do compliance inspections when the properties are sold and, and in other cases, they may be brought to our attention, uh, particular encroachment or, or just observed.
Right, so, I mean, and as we come across them, we do try to get them corrected. We have issued citations for zoning code violations and we try to work through those processes. People get notified. Just because the house sold and the house encroaches into the setback, doesn't mean I'm going to cite them for having a driveway that encroaches into the setback. By our non-conforming section, it's existing, they can maintain it, they can repair it, but they can't replace it. So like if they all of a sudden want to put in a new and bigger driveway, that new and bigger driveway has to meet that one-foot setback. It doesn't just get to keep going on in perpetuity.
So, so the next two are very specific questions about provisions of the zoning code. And Michael and I, we're just going to have to get back to you on both of those. Uh, let's go on to the one that's on definitions, where it's words herein not defined should be interpreted in accordance with. The definition's considered to be normal dictionary usage. So, so herein means just Title 10? The answer to that is yes.
Yes, we agree with that.
It, it applies to the words in the zoning code. Although, you know, that, that, that concept applies generally, but it's, the, the way it's worded, it's only talking about Title 10. Uh, how does the commission determine normal dictionary usage? Wiktionary? Is there a standard typically-used dictionary? So the answer to that is looking to the court system and common law. The answer is, there is sort of a typical, uh, way to approach things that aren't defined by statute. And, and they do look to dictionaries, but they look to ones that have been in standard usage. So Wiktionary would not typically be one of those. The, the most typical one is if it's a legal term, you go to a, a dictionary called Black's Law Dictionary. Courts cite to that and look at it as, 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 as an aid when they have no other, you know, it's not the first choice. When courts look at ambiguity in legislation, they try to determine the plain meaning, they look to legislative history if it exists. But they, they'll look to analogous terms, Black's Law Dictionary is one, Webster's Dictionary is another. You see it cited in, in court decisions. And so that's where, you know, you would typically look. But I think you would start with us, because we represent a lot of municipalities and deal with a lot of zoning codes. So if Michael's here, you'd say, is this, is there any standard way to interpret this? You know, that's, he, he's like a dictionary in that sense. Well, you know, because he has experience with coming up in other areas or how other codes may be slightly different, which will help you determine what your provision is. You know, that's, so sometimes that, that's probably where you start and then you go to outside that.
Uh, next is can we get histories on aspects of the zoning codes, such as driveway lists a lot over time? Um, so, so, you know, this is kind of a, you're, you're free to ask Sonia for that type of information, but, uh, you know, the village has a, has a smaller staff and it, it might be better if you're interested in a subject like that. Uh, I'm sure Sonia can make available the historic versions of the zoning code and you can kind of do your own comparison of, of how standards have changed over time. If you're, especially on something finite like driveways, you're able to look at that.
I think definitely though, if there is a case you have before you and you get the staff report and there is additional information that you want from me or if you want to say, I think I remember that we had a variance three years ago about a garage, you know.
Yep.
Can, can you please tell me what that is or point me where I can find that information? Please feel free to email me or call me and ask me that and I will get the information to you or direct you to the link where you can, can find that information. Because either it's going to be, you know, on our website already with the minutes and packet that was posted online or it's going to be in a board packet that you'll be able to, to download and, and parse through and find that information. Or, you know, I can, you know, if it's something like, what did the 1920s code say about driveways? Well, you know, I got a drover, it's got the 1920 code and all the amendments through until 1997 and then I also have the 2005 code and all of its amendments, it's that. So, you know, I can, you know, given the time, I can go to my drover and pull out that information and try and find it for you.
And sometimes people like to refer to the fact that our first zoning code was four pages long, which is true and it's framed in the hallway in there if you ever want to read that.
Or non-con, I was non-conformity tracked as, as well as can, as possible, given the small staff. Some non-conformities have been tracked well because they create a current issue. Like we had one where, is it the front yard encroachments? The, remember a couple of years ago where we, we tracked all of them that were going to be treated as legal non-conforming? And so staff went out and, and looked at all of them. Whether they were like, whether it was a fancy mailbox or whether it were like an ornamental pillar or whatever it was. And that were technically illegal, but there were so many and for so long that the board was interested in knowing where they all are. And so staff did get those. So sometimes it's very accurate and very thorough and in other areas, not so much.
Right, and in reflection of that, you know, that comes to a staff policy thing. So because they were looking at those kind of things in our compliance inspection, that got added onto the sheet as one of the things we're supposed to be looking for. How many street trees out there? Are there any hardscape encroachments? And you can make that, make that note out there. So there's kind of that track, internal tracking mechanism. So we do make an effort to try to track those kinds of things.
Okay, so the, the next one, the second part of it's easy. Does the entire current zoning code date to, to 2005 unless another date is parenthetically noted? Yes. Yes, that's for sure. The, the first part, how is, can you clarify us to tell the date of the adoption of a specific code change? I added specific there, when we're reading the code. That's a little harder because the parentheses come at the end.
They sometimes work in the subsection as I'm, I'm looking at here, so.
But you don't really know what was changed. Like whether words were changed within that subsection, whether that subsection was added. So what you need to do in order to make sure you understand what changed is there's an ordinance number that's there.
That Kathy Haley can get you and, and you can see what specific changes were made.
And that will explain what was there and what was changed, because the board always has that before them in the ordinance. But it doesn't appear in the code because it would get messy. Last one.
Does the village staff perform a periodic cleanup review of its zoning code and the rest of the municipal code? After which the village board enacts a, something making the corrective changes? And the answer is yes, I think Sonia and I both kind of keep a running, a running tab of things that we want to, you know, fix, some big, some small in the zoning code. And, uh, the, the village board does, does the same periodically, will do some cleanup. If, if we happen to be doing something in the liquor code, making some text amendments in the liquor code, um, you know, we can correct things, we might wait if they're not pressing and correct some other things in that code that have come to our attention. Uh, so, so we're not, um, you know, it's not such that we're passing one every year like, like the general assembly does when they do a lot of cleanup, uh, but, but it is something that everyone keeps an eye on.
Well, and also keep in mind with the zoning code, it's, you want to try to keep that cleanup to not a bunch of frequent, small ones because you have to publish, you, the requirements to change, to make, those are text amendments if they're in the zoning code. It's far easier to change code provisions in the liquor code, for example, than in the zoning code. Generally speaking, with the zoning code, because you got the public hearing, you have to publish, you got to do all this stuff, they, the staff tends to keep a record of them and then you go in at one, at one sitting and get all little things in one publication, present them all to you and then get them up to the village board. That's the other thing about the other code provisions is often they get their change just at the village board level on a recommendation from staff. They don't need to go through a subsidiary body.
But for the zoning code?
For the zoning code, it does.
And here, any text amendment also has to go to the preservation commission for their review and comment as well. So there is that extra step in Riverside, at least when it comes to text amendments, that, that they get a look at that as well.
All right, does anyone have any more questions?
This was incredibly helpful. Have we, have you appropriately described a text amendment versus a variance and where we might want to consider a text amendment? Do you guys think you're kind of clear on that?
As clear as can be, I think. It's not a, it's not a bright line.
It's not a hard fast, yeah.
You know, people like, like Doug, for instance, is, you know, he's very, because he deals with it every day, he would probably be able to spot it the quickest of, of anybody on the board, just because he deals with it.
I always answer that question by asking myself, why am I, why would I approve this variation? variation and, and still tell everyone else you can't do this? And if the answer is I can't, well then I should do a text amendment.
It's a good, it's a good one, yeah.
Because it's, you're, you're creating barriers and you're acting as a judge, not as a legislator.
And, and, and weak facts, right?
Right. And as a judge, you, you're, it's all about fairness. I mean, fairness is so important. And so, you know, you might say, you see a variation, you think, ah, there's nothing wrong with what this guy wants to do. But again, why shouldn't he be allowed to do it and then staff is told, you go and tell everyone else they can't do it?
Because that's what the code says.
So, you know, that's really, I've always found that helpful to think of it that way.
And one of the things to keep in mind is when an applicant comes in, Sonia sits down with them, they have an opportunity to kind of get the, get the lay of the land. And she may offer them options, like maybe it's more, do you want to consider a text amendment? Or, or people can even bring concurrent applications. People can propose a text amendment or in the alternative of variation.
So how do text amendments usually occur? Because of the petitioner or maybe it's the village board?
Both.
It's, it's both.
It depends. And that's what Sonia said, that when she works with people, then we, she said, we can have that discussion about whether this is proposed by the petitioner or whether it's a village-sponsored text amendment.
Right. So when the ferret shelter wanted to come into town, the ferret shelter got to ask for the text amendment, not the village. So, so there was, you know, application fee involved and, and they went through that process to, to get that text amendment and then concurrently the special use, you know, should that text amendment pass, for them to be able to have, to have. That was not something that I felt needed to be a village-initiated thing.
Right.
You know, am I opposed to animal shelters? No. Is that something that the village needs to be looking for and accommodating in our code? Not necessarily. So the onus, I felt, was better to be on them to go through that versus village taking on, you know, that cost.
A village-sponsored one would be more where you see there's a general demand, there's a, yeah, there's, and the village should sponsor it rather than put the onus on one of the people when many are going to benefit from it and you think it's generally a good idea.
The other one was metal roofs. So it was a resident that requested a text amendment to be able to allow metal roofs. So that was that. Whereas when you have things like clarifying things, like how we determine street yard, that was a staff-led, planning and zoning commission-led initiative. Changing regulations for porches, you know, that was something that was requested by the village board that we look into how we're determining porches and, you know, how can we revise those regulations to, to allow porches? And it kind of morphed into, okay, let's allow new porches, but what are we, you know, what restrictions are we going to put on them? So, so that's kind of, and other things have just been cleanup. We had, we were already looking at some of our uses and so we included the driving school in something, because we were already looking at some of our, our use table and some consistencies and things that needed to be addressed.
So the, the boards have consistently kind of reviewed the uses in the central business district and in the V1 and kind of updated those charts, considered whether certain special uses should be permitted uses and vice versa. So, so they're cognizant of that and they do that periodically.
Any other questions? All right, thanks. Thanks to everyone for coming and putting up with us.
Thank you very much. Can we get a motion to adjourn? Oh, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second. All in favor? Any opposed?